We are live. Microphones are not working at the dais. Okay, that's a new problem. Give us a moment, we'll start this meeting shortly. Perfect, alright.
The light, no.
No? Not working?
No.
Mine is working, but the light is not on, and it's... It's hot.
Hot mic.
Hot mics for today.
Everyone?
Mics are on, all time.
No, you can have your sound when you speak.
Yep. Lights aren't working?
But that's a total reboot of the system. I don't want to risk that with me. Sure.
Okay, we are going to go ahead and get started. A couple of things before we call to order, we will have a change on the agenda. We will be taking up item 10A after the public hearing item 13A. Also, I would like to state that we're going to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Paul Bradford Honorado. And I'd like to say a few words. Brad, loyal friend, advocate, kind, no-nonsense, straightforward, grateful and gracious, active, enthusiastic, loved people, loved life. Ethical, strong, hopeful. Of service, patriotic. Funny, fun, sarcastic, quick-witted. Never hesitated to tell you he was proud of you and loved you. Working with Congressman Mike Thompson for over thirty years, Brad knew just about everyone in the district and they knew him. Brad touched so many lives through his dedication to public service. He was down-to-earth, approachable, and genuinely enjoyed helping others. No challenge was too large or too small to personally attend to. Today, we offer our condolences to Brad's family and to Congressman Thompson and his staff. Brad, we honor your service and your friendship, and thank you for sharing your remarkable life with all of us. Godspeed. Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order and have the roll call, please.
Vice Chair Cottrell?
Here.
Supervisor Ramos?
Here.
Supervisor Pedrosa?
Here.
Supervisor Gregory?
Here.
Chair Gallagher?
Here. Would you join me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to move on to Pet of the Week. And as well, I will announce that after that, Supervisor Ramos is going to make a presentation of the proclamation recognizing September 2024 as Hispanic Heritage Month in Napa County.
Good morning, Katie.
Good morning.
Who do we have today?
This is Senor.
Hey, it's Katie.
Thank you. So this is Senor. He is around three months old. He came to the shelter, he was found in the unincorporated part of the county. Him and his sibling Mac. It was supposed to be both of them, but exciting news, Mac did get adopted this weekend. So it's just this little guy, he's very friendly, very playful. Sorry, I'm gonna have you take that, so he doesn't run off, okay. Super playful, he is so loving, I'm gonna try to get his purr. Anybody hear it? No, I don't think it's getting it. He's purring so loud, he's vibrating my hand. But he's so sweet, and I did want to say, exciting news, Asher from last week, the beautiful husky, got adopted the same day of the board meeting. So, thank you, Board, for sponsoring that adoption, that's amazing, and it's been going really good, so we appreciate it. This is Senor.
Well, thank you, Senor, for visiting with us, and I hope you get adopted today. Yeah, and the adoption fees will be waived, so please come down and see all of our friends at the animal shelter. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Senor appropriate for today. It is my great honor to invite up Jorge Gonzalez, President of the Napa County Hispanic Network, to receive the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation from the Board of Supervisors. Good morning and thank you for being here. I'm gonna just, I'm just gonna read a couple of recitals of our proclamation, and this is a new adventure for us as we do it bilingually. Por cuanto la junta de supervisores del condado de Napa reconoce con orgullo del quince de septiembre al quince de octubre de 2024 como el mes de la herencia hispana en el condado de Napa, celebramos la histórica única, las diversas culturas, las bellas tradiciones y las ricas contribuciones de los hispanos. Suya herencia tiene sus raíces en España, México, Puerto Rico, el Caribe y América Central y del Sur. "And whereas we honor and respect the remarkable resilience of our Hispanic communities who have persisted through centuries of discrimination to lead movements for justice and equality, the invaluable contributions of Hispanic individuals have enriched our society in countless ways. Without the dedication and spirit of the Hispanic community, our beloved Napa County would not be the beautiful, thriving place we cherish today. And whereas today and every day we celebrate our Hispanic community and encourage all people to recognize and confront systemic racism in our neighborhoods and beyond, let us stand in the gap at every opportunity, bridge barriers with fearlessness, and combat racism and intolerance to improve representation of Hispanic people in all facets of our society." Ahora, por lo tanto se proclama que esta junta de supervisores condado de Napa, estado de California, este día veinticuatro de septiembre de 2024, por la presente reconoce del quince de septiembre al quince de octubre de 2024 como el mes de la herencia hispana en el condado de Napa, y llamamos a la gente del condado de Napa a observar este mes participando en programas, actividades y reflexiones, y a continuar nuestros esfuerzos para crear una comunidad que sea más justa, más activa y prospera para todos. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you very much, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we present this proclamation to Jorge and the Hispanic Network. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you Supervisor Ramos, and thank you to the entire Board for making this proclamation in recognition of the many contributions that our Hispanic Atlantic community have made in our community, the Napa Valley. My name is Jorge Gonzalez, and I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Napa County Hispanic Network. As the Board President, I know how important it is to lift up the stories and contributions of those who have come before us and to inspire our Hispanic Atlantic's youth. Our mission is to empower the next generation of Hispanic leaders for our community by providing scholarships and opportunities for them to accomplish their dreams and aspirations. I would also like to take this opportunity to personally invite you all to our upcoming Vamos Napa Valley Gala event coming up next Saturday, October 5th, where we are celebrating our fortieth anniversary. So, this gala is an important celebration of the contributions of the Napa Valley Hispanic community and an opportunity to raise funds to help our youth become the leaders of tomorrow. Unfortunately, due to COVID, as we all know, we have not been able to have this gala in over four years, so this is an especially important year for us as we hope to increase the amount of scholarships available. I hope you all can join, we'll be sure to send more details out. Again, thank you for the Board, thank you to the Board for this important recognition. It means so much to me personally and to our community. Thank you again.
Thank you, and I'll invite my colleagues down so we could take a picture. And as a former recipient of the Hispanic Network Scholarship, it is very much a pleasure to be able to have you here because that money actually does go very far.
Okay, we do actually need to take a motion and approve the proclamation. So I would entertain a motion from my colleagues.
So moved.
Second?
From second.
Did you move in second?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I heard Supervisor Cottrell. So, we have a motion from Supervisor Ramos, a second from Supervisor Cottrell. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, great, and thank you so much, and thank you so much Supervisor Ramos. That was so well done. Okay, we will move on to our consent calendar for special districts. Do I have any public comment on item five? I'm guessing nothing on the phone, Ms. Hoskins? Okay. All right, I will bring it back to the Board for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Ramos, second by Cottrell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're going to move to number six. We are going to be pulling six R. So we will first take public comment on six A through Q and S through W. Is there any public comment? Anything on the phone? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the Board. Do we have a motion on A through Q and S through W?
So moved.
Moved by Gregory, seconded by Pedrosa. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. That will come up, we will talk about that, consent item under number nine. So now we have regular public comment for all matters not listed on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. Do we have any general public comment? Anything on the phone? All right, great. We're going to move on to Board of Supervisors' reports and announcements.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe there was somebody in the audience that raised their hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did some, okay, yes, please come forward, I'm sorry. You can always just come forward to the podium when we call for public comment. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I raised it silently. Good morning, I apologize for reading from my notes, but public speaking is something that I've yet to master. I'm here as a longtime Napa resident who's been cycling this valley for forty-five years. I felt compelled to appear here today to thank this Board and the Napa County Public Works Department for several projects that have made biking much safer for myself and others who regularly travel around this county. First, I would like to thank you for the support and resources that you've provided to complete the newest section of the vine trail between St. Helena and Calistoga. Up until this section was completed, these communities have been isolated for all but the most fearless riders, riders who were comfortable riding in close proximity to high-speed traffic. Now I see many children riding bike with their parents finally having a safe place to do this. People from all backgrounds are walking, running, and riding the trail. Folks who work in the vineyards now have a safe alternative to driving to work. I would also like to thank the County Public Works Department who have overseen the page- like to thank the County Public Works Department who have overseen the paving of many of our roads frequently ridden by Napa Valley cyclists. Poor pavement is inconvenient or annoying for drivers, but it can be deadly for cyclists. Four of the roads that connect the east and west sides of the valley have been paved and striped. Included in the striping process were the conflict markings that the Napa County Bike Coalition have advocated for that reduce collisions between bikes and cars. And perhaps the best surprise has been the repaving of the county's portion of Orchard Avenue just outside of the city of Napa. This road is heavily used by cyclists, but the pavement quality was very poor. I'm sure that the drivers that live out that way will also appreciate not having to get their cars repaired as frequently. I applaud these efforts to make Napa County safer and accessible for all modes of transportation.
Thank you so much. And sir, your name again?
TC Halsey.
Thank you, Mr. Halsey.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go back to item eight, Board of Supervisors' Reports and Announcements. Anyone have anything? Supervisor Cottrell. Oops. That got a little messed up, but go ahead Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you. I just wanted to share with my colleagues that last week was the RCRC Annual Meeting close by over in Roanoke Park, which makes it handy. And just a couple items from that. First of all, there was a tour back over to Napa County to Sterling Vineyards so that we could talk about wildfire recovery and resilience. And I want to say thank you to Ryan Alsop for coming over and talking with the RCRC reps there, too. And we also got presentations on large-scale solar planning. Large-scale solar in our county is probably not the same scale as in a county like Kern, but I think it's an important thing to pay attention to because we we need to make sure that we're preserving ag land at the same time as figuring out how to do these solar installations. So that was interesting. And then the final item of interest I wanted to share is that here in our county, there's a lot of work happening with our grape growers on regenerative agriculture. And there, we heard presentations from the dairy industry also on regenerative agriculture. So it was great to see a different agricultural sector also working on that. So I think it'd be interesting to get those those two groups together to talk to. So that's my report from RCRC.
Thank you. Supervisor Ramos?
Thank you. I just wanted to applaud the efforts of the Suicide Prevention Council for a really fantastic conference last week at Napa Valley College Performing Arts Center. The keynote speaker shared a very personal and touching story that I you could see resonated with many in the audience. And that was very impactful to to see a very thoughtful conference. And it was proactive. And I really just want to thank the council for their work and to our our county, our county employees who were assisting in that mental health sheriff's office and other and alcohol and drug as well. And next, another great success. And I personally just want to remind everyone and and I hope to be able to do more work with Career Point. And my very, very favorite part, we opened Career Point. That's great. But my very, very favorite part was the Career Point closet. And this is a closet that is outfits, individuals who are going to be going to a job interview that are getting ready for the job market. And so keep that in mind. If there's things that are just not are taking up too much space in your closet, keep that in mind. And that's a donation that can be made over to Career Point. And the absolutely new clothes as well. But I just think this is a really great collaboration between the Workforce Investment Board and Health and Human Services. And it was exciting. And I already have some items to donate. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that was really great. So if you have a chance to go over and visit Career Point, please do. I also wanted to piggyback on the Suicide Prevention Conference was fantastic. The keynote speaker, Candace Washington, was amazing. They will be, there will be a link to see her keynote presentation. It hasn't been sent out yet, but we will make sure that we put that up somewhere on our website or get it out in some way so that everyone can take a look. It was really, really wonderful. Okay, looks like that is that. So we will go ahead and go back. Do you guys have anything?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see your number. Sorry.
That's all right.
Supervisor Gregory?
Couple of quick ones. As your rep on the Napa Sanitation District Board, a few things there. We're having an open house out at the plant on September 28th. So that's this Saturday, 10 to 2. Come on out and and see all the all the work we're doing out there, particularly some of the cutting-edge stuff that we're we're starting. One being the linear generator. Now, get this. I know Cameron's gonna appreciate this, the engineer out there. The linear generator is the first of its kind to run off biogas from a treatment plant. It generates electricity. We're having a ribbon cutting for it Thursday at 11. It's kind of exciting. Right? Yeah, I think so. That, along with the large-scale floating solar we're planting out there, which will be the biggest, I think, this side of the Mississippi. We're doing a lot of great stuff in Napa Sand. You can come see it all on Saturday between 10 and 2. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for mentioning that. It is actually quite exciting. The Air District was involved as well. And it's it's really cutting edge. So I hope people will take a look. Okay, so that brings us back to the item that we pulled from consent. That is six R. And if I could invite staff up who could speak to that. And I think I'm gonna turn it over to Supervisor Ramos, who asked to pull this item.
Yes. And I will say, I don't think we actually were very clear that Career Point is located at Health and Human Services at our south campus. Thank you so much. So I wanted to pull item R and and just to kind of establish some some parameters and hopefully have some information about a plan. When you look at the board letter, it has the different options that were already presented to us when we decided to go ahead and enlist this design firm. But we don't have a financing plan in place. We don't know if it's how much is gonna come from our accumulated capital outlay, how much is gonna be bond financing? If we have a new building, is there gonna be cops on that or something else? We don't have that. This is, this is the largest capital expenditure that this that this county has ever made. I feel like we're doing that quite often here, and that's that's good. That means progress. That means investment in our community and the services that we give. But I wanted to pull this and have an opportunity for you to share. When are we gonna look at the finances? Because as you know, our Public Works Director, Mr. Letter, when we have a capital program come forward, we have a spreadsheet. It tells us, here's the budget, here's the percentage of the budget that you have already expended. This is a $710,000, $720,000 expenditure. We have no spreadsheet of what percentage of the total budget this is because we haven't gotten to that place. So I'd like to hear a little bit more of moving forward, where are we gonna talk about the money?
Very good. Thank you Supervisor Ramos and members of the board, Steve Letter, Public Works Director. So I'll just talk about the the very short term here, and then I'm gonna turn the long term over to our Assistant CEO, Becky Craig. So in the short term, the as the the board is well aware, we've been talking about this project for a couple of years now. And this step of the process, we had identified roughly $10 million, well, exactly $10 million in the capital improvement fund for these early stages of the process, hiring the architect, doing the studies and whatnot. So this initial $720,000, which is for, again, the first stage of hiring our architect and getting into primarily the design of building four, but also doing the ground truthing on all the other facilities to make sure that all the assumptions that we've made in terms of everyone's going to fit in the box, in fact, fit into the boxes that we have. So the design funding, and particularly this contract funding, is identified in the CIF. We had talked to the board broadly in the long term, the entire project. And of course, these are high-level estimates, but about $140 million to complete all of the building improvements, which include building four, a rehabilitation of this building, an upgrade of the building at 650 Imperial, as well as the demolition of the existing Hall of Justice and jail complex. So all of that is included in the 140. How we're gonna pay for that, I will pass that on. And again, this is consistent with what we've told the board previously, although, again, many more details to come. I will turn it over to Becky.
Right. And as the details come forward and are truthed and verified and change, we will have better information. And we need that better information before we can actually go to the market. So for issuance of debt. So we don't anticipate going to the market for an 18-plus months until we have better information, which will come from the architect at the end of their preliminary design and their construction estimates. At that time, we will then work with our financial advisor, who we are already in touch with, who is already creating frameworks for us with the anticipation that as more data comes available, we will have the opportunity to have more substantive plans and then to actually start the process of financing. We do have the cash, as Steve has said, to finance the architecture and the preliminary design work to be able to get this to bid documents. At that point in time, we will then bring that to the board with a financing plan recommendation. We have, for the last two years, had in the five-year forecast, $9 million estimated annually for debt service payments based on this very rough estimate of $140 million total project. So we do forecast the need for debt and the ability to make those debt payments. That will also be revised annually as we update the financial forecast. So another key piece that will play into this is over the next six months, we will be bringing to the board a five-year capital plan forecast. So it will show the board a more comprehensive picture of all the capital needs. This will be a large piece of it, but there are many other county facilities, whether they're roads, buildings, towers, that also need to be put into the whole picture to understand what will be recommended for investment and the funding sources thereof. So all of that is in process and will be presented as the pieces become available.
Thank you. I definitely do understand we're not at a point of issuance of debt. We need to commit to a project first. My concern is more on this front end. We have 10 million identified. There's not a budget for that 10 million. It just says that this this front-end work is coming from the 10 million. What I'm looking for are some some data points of of the 10 million. How much is gonna be spent? How much do we anticipate for the upfront work? And so that we can manage our costs from the beginning on that front end, understanding that there's already cash. We we put the cash into into the accumulated capital outlay. That's great. But we need a plan for it. We can't just be spending because whatever the next receipt is, we actually have to be able to manage those costs. So that's that's ask number one, that we actually have a plan for those $10 million that are already cash on hand. The next one is question on where does the debt committee come into play when it comes to the issuance? Is it once, are they before? Do they make a recommendation to us? Or do we decide we want to carry debt and it goes to the debt committee? Where? How does that work?
The debt committee meets about once a year, and it will be on every agenda between now and then. And yes, the debt committee will review the options before any recommendations are made to the board and then take any feedback from the board for further discussion.
Okay. And then when it, when it comes to, when it comes to the project as a whole, right, we're doing design work on the front end for multiple. One of my, one of my concerns here is we, we know how much we're spending, right? We did this on the on the jail project, and we combined a few of the items that were shared costs between the correctional facility relocation and the reentry project. And so my my question is, when are we gonna get to that that point of the budgeting so that we could see what is, this is obviously gonna be design work that impacts all of the, all of the relocation and improvements for the buildings. But at some point, some of the items go just to 650 Imperial. Some of the items just go to Carruthers. Some come here to the admin. Where are we gonna get to that kind of refinement of costs?
So I'm gonna back up to your original question, which I think also answers this question. So this initial $720,000 brings on LPA, our chosen architect. And this is basically their first phase of the project. And coming out of this phase, we will develop, first off, a more detailed schedule of design and the various design steps, as well as a budget with the various design steps. I mentioned that the first focus is likely going to be on building four because the way the sequence of of the moves works out. But while we're in, moving forward on more detailed design in building four, we'll also be looking at schematic and and higher-level designs of the administration building and what we're gonna do at 650. Again, with the reason being that we don't want to, like, finish building four and then start looking here and say, oh, we don't fit in that box. You know, so we need to be looking at the at the various stages. So this initial start will actually give us the design schedule and design budget you're talking about. What we're basically working with right now, if you look at the jail, which was previously the largest project the county had ever done, $133 million, which, by the way, is on time and on budget. Actually, a little under budget. Don't count on too much money coming back, but under budget. So typically, design costs, particularly on a large project, tend to run about 10% about the cost of the cost of the project. Again, the jail was $133 million total. The design budget was right around $10 million. Here, we're talking about $140 million project, and we're still estimating around ultimately about $10 million. But that's just, that's just back of the envelope right now. So we are getting into the stage where we can provide much more detail as to how much the design is gonna cost. And at each step of those designs, there's also a cost estimate of construction. So we can begin putting those parts together. Oh, building four, we thought is gonna be $40 million, but it's really gonna be 37. The admin building, we thought was gonna be X, but it's really gonna be Y. So, so the answer to all your questions is essentially gonna start to form under this scope of work. And then we'll be in a position to come back with a great deal more details. And some of that is also the timing, which will then inform the bonding as well. Because we may want to go out for all the money at once, or maybe not. Maybe it makes more sense to go out in pieces. But all of that information needs to come together to start allowing the board to make those decisions.
Certainly. I appreciate that. I definitely do want us to focus in on how are we spending that 10 million. That's what I really want us to focus on, on the front end, so that it can better inform how we deal with debt and financing on the back end. But really having a budget for that 10 million, that's information we have right right now at our disposal. So those are all my questions. Thank you.
And that is why we did, if you will, this smallish contract. Not that $720,000 is an insignificant sum, but this is why we're doing it in increments, that we did this first increment to allow us to inform the later pieces.
And it's a four- to five-year project. So the 10 million will not be spent just in year two or year three. This is over the life of the project.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And Supervisor Cottrell?
Yeah, thank you. This is really helpful. Just to follow up. So it sounds like today's ask is for this initial spend and design work to then come back to the board with a design budget. And so can you give us a sense of when we might expect that?
Going a little off the top of my head here, but I believe probably within about six months or so, we we should be back with a great deal more detail.
Great. No, I think that's just a helpful ballpark. So thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Great. Thank you both so much for for doing that. And I'll bring it back to the board and with some? Oh, yes. Public comment on this item? And anything on the phone? Okay.
Move approval.
All right. We have a motion by Gregory. All right. We have a motion by Gregory. A second by Cottrell. Got there just a hair before you, Supervisor Petrosa. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. And thank you so much for that discussion. That was really important to have. Okay. As I mentioned, we will be taking 10A after 13A. So, we're going to go ahead and move on to our administrative items. We have our first item, A, adopt an ordinance amending Napa County's contract with the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System, CALPERS. And so, Ms. Berseno, welcome and look forward to your report.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Supervisors. This is a final reading of an ordinance change to amend a contract with CALPERS and the county. And it is before you, because CALPERS statutorily requires a public hearing whenever there are contract changes, which include cost sharing. In 2022, our probation officers and our juvenile hall counselors broke from the Public Service Employees Unit, SEIU 1021, and formed the Napa County Probation Professionals Association, which is their own unit. As such, we needed to amend the contract in order to add NCPPA to the CALPERS contract and include cost sharing. Prior to this public hearing, we did hold an election of the membership, which is required by statute. And they have unanimously voted to, of course, adopt this contract in order to continue their pension benefits.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So, to Robert's rules, we're going to practice our new way of doing things here. So, I'm going to take public comment, and then I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions. And then, we would like to have a motion. And then, after the motion will come discussion and comments. Does everybody kind of know where we're going here? Okay, great. We're going to practice doing this, so we get it down. So, is there any public comment on this item, 11A? And do we have anything on the phone? Okay, great. We will bring it back to the board. Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Berseno? Okay, great. Then I will entertain a motion, if someone would like to make one. Motion by Supervisor Ramos.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Cottrell. Is there any discussion or any comments? Okay. All right. Then I'm going to go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, great. We made it through the first one. All right. B and C are actually presentations. So, we'll go to the CEO's office for a presentation, actually by Cara Werner. Cara, great. Come on up. Executive Director of the Napa County Bicycle Coalition, who will give us updates in connectivity for bike and pedestrian infrastructure in Napa County and how Napa County compares to our neighboring counties. Hi, Cara. Good morning.
Hi. Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here today and talked with you about connectivity priorities. I know that there is a PowerPoint, I believe, that's coming up to share.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. Okay. Well, okay. So, I have the presentation in front of me, too, so I'll read off of that a little bit. But we are here today to talk about connectivity. So, I want to start by saying a little bit about what that is. People for Bikes describes it as how well the bike network connects people with the places they want to go. So, pretty straightforward in that way. A connected bike network offers people multiple ways to get to where they want to go and a safe, comfortable experience for people of all ages and abilities. And I'll talk more about that phrase in just a little bit. Why is improved connectivity of the bike network important? Excellent. Thank you. There's a ton of reasons, more than are even on this slide, but I just want to talk about two. One is to facilitate mode shift and help meet climate goals. So, we know that switching to EV vehicles will not allow us to meet climate goals on their own. We know that people need to move away from single occupancy vehicles, too, and having a connected bike network will facilitate that. We also know that, given the inflation of recent years, that that hit people with vehicles particularly hard. The cost of new cars, the cost of gas went up. So, having a connected bike network really means a viable transportation alternative for folks, especially with the advent of e-bikes. And, you know, around the country, e-bikes continue to shoot up in sales. And we, as a coalition, will be doing more works on, more work with e-bikes in the coming years, building on the work of the Napa Valley Forward Project, which begun that work here. So, we really think, especially looking at the county, the unincorporated areas, that it will become more feasible for people to actually go buy bike for transportation. So, that's just two reasons why it's important to improve the connectivity of the bike network and to do that really now, to take advantage of that shift that is occurring. So, why did we look at this connectivity concept? Well, NVTA is currently in the process of redoing their bike plan. It'll be a bike and pedestrian plan this year. And that process has always been such a wonderful foundation and roadmap for improvements. And it's been a full menu of options. In the past, it has not included a priority list that would most shift connectivity. So, that's why we wanted to talk about that and help identify that in each of the jurisdictions throughout Napa County. We also know that a lot of the bike network improvements happen along with general road improvements based on the pavement condition index. And so, that's a wonderful, cost-effective way to get in some bike network improvements, but it also doesn't take into consideration connectivity. So, you could have a very, you know, wonderful, low-stress bike facility over here and one over here, but the point that connects them may be too tough for people to really take advantage of those improvements. So, connectivity is important in that way, too. We worked with our advocacy working group, who's a group of very experienced riders and people who understand the bike network in Napa. We looked at a bunch of the foundational documents. And actually, if we could go to the next slide, just past that general background slide. Yep, that one. So, we pulled from the Travel Behavior Survey, the Vision Zero study. We looked at a lot of the data that was available to us and married that with our own experience. And in the county in particular, we married that with Strava Metro. So, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Strava. It's an app that a lot of people who ride and run use. Strava Metro is available to nonprofits, and it shows the aggregate use of people who use Strava. So, it is only for Strava users, but it is county-wide. So, it does give us a really good picture of where especially recreational riding is happening in the unincorporated areas of Napa County. So, we pulled from that quite a bit to develop these priorities as well. And then, so we developed the sort of six priority changes we'd like to see that would most improve connectivity. And then, we also developed what the treatments are, what the bike facilities we'd like to see are. And that is largely based on this next slide, which is from the Federal Highway Administration. They have a pretty straightforward way of saying what kind of bike lane is most appropriate for what kind of road. And they primarily look at speeds and volumes. And that chart shows, you know, is this appropriate for mixed use, like Bike Boulevard you might find on a residential road? Or do we want a standard bike lane or a bike lane with a buffer? Or do we want a separated or protected bike lane, one that has an element of vertical separation between, and the travel lane? We didn't only look at this, however, because there is the reality. This is sort of the should be, and then we have to, you know, pair that with what our roads actually look like and the amount of funding that's available and whatnot. So, we did try to put those two together. On the next slide, you can see we then surveyed our constituents to say, did we get it right? Do you agree with this list? Would you make any changes? And this is just a quick snapshot of how that broke out. There were 33 people who responded, and you can see kind of first choice, second choice, et cetera. We did make a few tweaks based on it, but primarily, folks felt like we got it right. So, in the next slide, you can see the six segments that we identified as priority. That doesn't mean, like, any change that happened, any improvement is an improvement. But in terms of connectivity, these are the six that folks felt like would most increase connectivity of the bike network. The first one is probably no shocker. That's the Vine Trail. And so, we're looking at, again, the unincorporated areas. We did a separate list for, within the towns and cities. Second one is Silverado Trail. And I'll probably talk about that the most because it's not going to go away. The need to ride on Silverado Trail will not end when the Vine Trail is complete. Monticello Road, this is a Caltrans road. We didn't separate that out, but I just want to note that for you. Old Howell Mountain, Oak Knoll Avenue, and then Rutherford is also Caltrans. So, if we could flip to the next slide, just noting, just desired is full completion. I think everyone understands what that is, what that looks like, and the efforts that are going into that. So, I won't say too much about that, but we really fully support the completion of the Vine Trail. And then, for Silverado, which was number two, we have an interim recommendation and then a long-term recommendation. And that's because this road is so long and so complex, and the long-term desired improvement would take quite a bit of funding. But I do want to just reinforce how important this is. There's a magazine, it's called Momentum Magazine, you know, mostly for bicyclists, and they just did an article on the best wine regions to cycle in, and California was number one. And it mentioned two routes, and one was the iconic Silverado Trail. So, Silverado Trail is important to Napa County. It's not just about, it's not just about, well, there's another road, just like with cars, right? I mean, we have 29, but that doesn't mean people don't want to drive on Silverado Trail anymore. People will want to ride to the wineries on Silverado Trail. It's very much the, you know, personality and characteristic of the county, as well as there are just going to be people who need to use it to get to where they need to go. And there are lots of people who will feel comfortable riding on it, especially with improvements. So, the first set of desired improvements that we pulled together had to do with, we knew that the county was thinking about perhaps doing some special signage and calling it a safety quarter. We felt like if you could double the fines for speeding in that area, that would give that signage more weight. So, that's a suggestion. We looked at reducing speeds. It's probably not our top one, but it's a tool in the toolbox. I think our main request at this point is adding reflectors adjacent to the bike lanes along Silverado Trail. It's something the county has done in other areas, and it would be a quick and relatively inexpensive way to add some kind of element where it wakes drivers up who might be drifting. In a way, it's similar to a rumble strip. And then, the conflict markings with the county is already implementing along intersections in particular, and maybe some of the more commercial driveways. Long-term, we'd love to see a protected bike lane along all of, or parts of Silverado Trail, or a bike lane that has, it's a standard bike lane with a buffer and a rumble strip and that. And actually, if we go to the next slide, there's a couple pictures. So, the one on the left there, that's a county project that has the reflectors. That's what we're hoping to see in the interim. And then, long-term, you can blend these treatments. So, that top photo is from Caltrans' latest toolkit draft, and it has that buffer. And then, in the buffer is the rumble strip. So, that's a pretty nice, and I think it's a lower maintenance, lower-cost way to go than the separated bike lane, but still much more effective than just that one strip of paint. And then, that third photo, you can see there's a curb there. They're using a curb as a separator. There's all different kinds of separators. We'll look at a few more. But this could be used intermittently, right? So, maybe you do a buffer with some rumble strips, and then, in some really high collision areas, maybe you add some curb to help reduce those conflicts and protect bicyclists. Okay. So, recommendations around Silverado Trail, if we go to the next slide. This is a Caltrans road. We're looking at this strip that connects the city of Napa to the Vichy Springs area. And right now, there's really no bike lane there, but it is ridden frequently. And we have given this feedback to Caltrans. So, they are in the process of updating their District Four bike plan, and we've submitted comments that reflect this, just so you know. If you go to the next slide, the picture on the left is currently what that road looks like, and the pictures on the right are what you've seen, I'm sure, all over, standard bike lanes or bike lanes with a buffer. And that's one style of buffer there. Okay, thank you. If we could go to number four. We're so excited that the county is working with Open Space District to maintain this Old Howell Mountain Road as a bike and ped path. It's one that I think is important for connectivity and recreation. And so, we know that this is in the works, and just want to thank you for working creatively to keep this beautiful route open. Number five is Oak Knoll Avenue. So, this is very, very used by cyclists. And right now, there is not even, you know, just not really even a shoulder here. And given the speeds and volumes, we, this would be an expensive change, but one that we think is important for connectivity and one that we really want to advocate for, which is adding cost-for bike lanes, protected bike lanes down Oak Knoll. Because of its use, because of its speeds, because of the way that it connects the east and west sides of the county, we think that this is an important one to really look at putting more resources into. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that there's really, I don't, I'll just say personally, I don't personally ride it unless I'm in a group of people. And when I see this, I think, how is it that so many people ride it, given that there's really no place for a bike to be on this road? So, scary. And that's why this is really ripe for a sort of deeper change. And if we go to the next slide, again, this is more shots of protected bike lanes. In the upper right is the most traditional one. It's a lane in one direction with sort of bollards or channelizers. You can do a cycle track, as they tend to call it that, where it goes in both directions and it's just on one side of the road. And then, people, I think those are called armadillo bumps. They do kind of look like armadillos. You know, there's a lot of different materials to be, you know, to add some flexibility with the amount of space you have. So, a few more of those. One thing I wanted to come back to was that, all ages and abilities. So, Oak Knoll's a good example of that. I have a feeling only really confident cyclists or cyclists who absolutely have to ride Oak Knoll are currently riding it. We are really advocating for a network where people, youth, you know, people of all ages, new riders, as well as experienced riders, would feel comfortable riding that. So, the facilities we're recommending are really with that in mind. Okay. And then, the last one, also Caltrans, is Rutherford Road, Cross Road. It's not as written as Oak Knoll. And so, therefore, we desire Class Two bike lanes there. It's, if you go to the next slide, you'll see there's really no shoulder there at all to ride. So, it's very similar to Oak Knoll, but it is less ridden. And so, kind of trying to be realistic about the need and the cost and the return on investment there. We are requesting bike lanes primarily on that road, and that is feedback that we've given to Caltrans as well. And again, just want to say thanks and see if you have any questions. And just shout out and a reminder that Walk and Roll to School Day is October 9. And we have 24 schools participating.
That's great. Thank you, Cara. That was a great presentation. And we do have some questions. Supervisor Cottrell?
Thank you. Thank you, Cara. That was just what the chair said. Really helpful presentation. One comment and then a question for you. I noticed, you know, looking at those buffer areas or buffer lanes, I was driving south from Calistoga on 29, so this is Caltrans. They have just recently striped buffers in up there that run for about a half-mile south. They're not filled with anything like an armadillo yet, but I'm wondering if that's... So, I guess that's a question. so I guess that's a question, if you know what they're planning to do there?
I don't, and, and actually, this is the first I'm hearing about. I know they went in and put a bunch of rumble strips, but that's unrelated to bike lanes. It was really for, for vehicle lanes along sections that weren't necessarily considered bike lanes, although I think some out South County were bike lanes. So I don't know, but I'll, I'll be up there, check that out very soon.
And then my, my question for you is, if we as a board, you know, look at these and say, hey, this list makes sense, or these, I'm specifically thinking about the Caltrans ones, is your recommendation that we send a board letter to Caltrans in support of this effort?
That would be excellent. I think that could only help, especially now because they are in the process of gathering that input for their bike plan, and I'd be happy to supply you some language if, if you're interested in that. You know, we, we appreciate the partnership with Caltrans, and we're not always immediately up to date, as you'll probably have noticed, there's the Napa County's first protected bike lanes on the I Mola Bridge. And, and I don't, I think that was a bit of a surprise to folks when that came, when that came in, but we're very happy they did it, and we're partnering with them to maintain it. The Bike Coalition is actually cleaning those lanes in order to keep them in. So, so I think that there are times where that communication works really well, and other times where we do our best. And any communication, any positive support for these recommendations, I think can only be helpful.
Got it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. You know, I really appreciated, Cara, one, you being here, no, one, you rode your bike here, because I saw you. Two, and you being here and giving us this update. I, I think one of the, one of the things that we did earlier this year, we set forth development agreement standards with Free Mark, the old Free Mark Abbey property with Jackson Family. And one of the items that we included in there was electric bike charging stations.
Right.
And we also received a presentation from, the name is escaping me, from UC Berkeley, working with UC Berkeley about electric electrification and infrastructure. So I think one of the things that would be helpful for us is, you know, us being able to understand from the Bike Coalition perspective, what is that frequency that we're going to, to need to help inform where we're going to put these, these charging stations, what's ideal, where we need to have it at the top of our mind, where it's maybe not as important. I think that that is a great next step for us, to be able to support the connectivity, because if you run out of juice, some people are going to run out of connectivity as, as well.
Absolutely.
The next one is, you know, I think the, the discussion in regards to Caltrans and what Caltrans chooses to do when they do it, is surprising. I think that's a great, great word for it, because I too was surprised that on southbound 29 between the Soscol Junction and Airport Boulevard, they added this, this very, very narrow bike lane on it in the last few days. It got striped, right, I believe, I see our Public Works Director in just last few days. And it is on the rumble side of the asphalt. So as you are turning, right by Ameren Cork, that, there's those trees. So I, I give this to you as maybe an opportunity of advocacy. I certainly wouldn't ride my road bike when I know that there are divots in the road, and that's actually where it was striped. So I think that communication with, with Caltrans, to Supervisor Cottrell's point, where we can be helpful to be able to send those messages, please do, do alert us and give us that, that opportunity. I, I think it also helps, we, we have a few bicycle riders up here that, we look at the situation, we say, you know, I'm, I'm probably not going to do that. Not, definitely not the, the best. I love that we have other options coming our way, but in the interim, it's important to make sure that what we do have is in fact safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And what you pointed out is very much why rumble strips can be controversial with bicyclists, because they've been put in in a way that's not supportive of bicycling, so.
Thanks. Supervisor Petrosa.
Cara, thank you for being here. On the survey, you said only 33 folks participated?
Correct.
That's a pretty small sample size. So I think next time, it'd be great to, how we can help and partner with you to get that to a broader group of folks. The improvements you listed, it wasn't just based off those 33 people, right? It was more representative based off other inputs?
The, the improvements were primarily a result of our study, of a group of us looking at all of the different data that's available, blending that with our experience and coming, I mean, if Napa County were a more complex, if this were New York City, we wouldn't be able to do this with much confidence, given the data that we have. But there are a handful of primary routes, and so it was, we were more comfortable doing it. The 33, though, are all cyclists, which I think when you do a broader survey and you have hundreds, only a portion of those are cyclists.
No, totally. And I'm reminded of, you know, we do surveys a lot with transit and transportation, MTC. The key participant is those that don't ride as well.
Yes.
So I think we got to make sure we capture those. One of the things that, you know, I, full disclosure, I live out by Vichy, I own property by Vichy, my kids go to Vichy, so I just want to be clear, but I see what happens, and it's dangerous. I would never let my kids ride their bike to school.
Yeah.
Right? So I think that's part of what we have to think about, is how do you, how do, not that we want to go back to the basics, but I think I grew up riding my bike to school at Alcentro It's Not Willow. My parents felt safe doing that.
Yeah.
People don't feel safe anymore. So I think we have to address that underlying issue. One of the things that I think would be a pretty cool partnership, you know, not just because my son's playing soccer and I have to drive him to practice three times a week, but partnering with sports leagues of maybe kids riding bikes as part of conditioning, part of being healthy, and if they can do that to practice and from practice, I think there's a lot of synergy there somewhere that'd be worth exploring, because if my kid could ride his bike from grandma's house with a couple of other teammates, we'd probably be a little more comfortable doing that, and the coach would probably like that, too. So I'd just encourage you to reach out to like the sports leagues in Napa to see if there's any ways to get creative around that and work with parents around that, along with schools. So my last question, in terms of cities, right, because residents don't distinguish whether it's county roads or city roads, how do you try to work together to make sure that connectivity doesn't recognize borders? So any thoughts on that or comments?
Well, what we did for this project is we identified sort of within and then between. And so we did two rounds of surveys, and each had three different essentially jurisdictions in them. And one of the ways that we work to connect the two is by partnering with the county and with the Public Works Department in the cities and reviewing plans. And so this is very focused on bike facilities, it's not very focused on intersections, for example. But because Director Letter is really willing to partner with us and include us in the conversation about the updates as they come, we can kind of have that, an eye to that as the two things come together, whether that's a road, because it's not just jurisdictions, it's, it's paving projects have these boundaries, right? And so they don't always connect either. So we, that's one way we keep an eye towards that.
One other idea that just came to me, because when you mentioned ag, Supervisor Gallagher and I were on a panel that was evaluating programs that, you know, were promoting sustainable tourism, and one of them was a group talking about doing a wine tasting with a vintner on your bike. But, so I thought that was innovative, but the idea is, you know, you could reach out to like these AVAs, right, that might want to sponsor the safety of, you know, Silverado Trail, that's in their portion of AVA as part of the promotion of safety, whether it's for locals or tourism. So there is, I forget how many AVAs we have in Napa, but I think that's another opportunity for you to see if there's any partnerships for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for great ideas. Supervisor Gregory.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Werner. It's good to see you. So the, the six recommendations you've just presented, those came out of this informal survey you facilitated?
They came out of first, a work group that studied the various roads and looked at all of the data associated with them. Some of that was crash data, some of it was the travel behavior study that NVA did a while ago, and so, and then we surveyed sort of to validate that list that we put together from the, the various documents we studied.
Good. I was curious about that. It's great work, and it's very informed analysis, I believe. The questions for our Public Works Director, Steve Letter, what, what do we have in the form of a bike circulation plan that this might sort of, these recommendations might fold into?
No.
Come on up.
Thank you, Cara. I did have actually sort of a number of comments, so I'll probably keep the microphone here for a sec. So as Cara mentioned, NVTA issues a countywide bike plan, of which obviously the county, county us participates in that countywide bike plan, and that bike plan is in, in the process of, of being updated. So that's, that's sort of the, the big picture. Wanted to sort of talk about a few of these aspects. First off, we, Public Works, very much appreciate being able to work with Cara and the Bike Coalition and, and other bike and pedestrian groups. We've been working, and we don't always, having in the past always done such a good job at making sure that we get our plans out to the groups really early, so that ideas can be incorporated into the designs really early, which is of course way better than building a project and then someone having, coming along saying, hey, why don't you add that? Well, that, you know, that's really the, the wrong time to do it. So we've very much appreciated that coordination and cooperation, getting early inputs, and we've done a lot of things that can be done in the context of our existing projects. So for instance, if we're doing a paving project, the ability to add paint in the right place and, and signage and that sort of thing is very doable in, in the context of those projects. Unfortunately, the bigger, what usually comes down to widening projects, but do become very challenging. Two or three years ago, actually maybe even four years ago now, when Salvador Avenue came up in the paving list, I was actually the one who said to my staff, hey, why don't we, why don't we add a bike path there? Why don't we add a bike lane there? Because it's, you know, it does lead, there's a school in the city, actually a couple of schools in the city on Salvador. So the, and we looked at it, and the, the paving project was estimated between a million and a million and a half, and adding the bike lane doubled the cost of the project, and it just, it just made it impossible. And the reason for that is anytime you're actually doing widening, you go from an environmental review of just doing paving, which is generally a categorical exemption maintenance, to basically doing a full-blown environmental study. Along Salvador, you've got a ditch, which is jurisdictional, so you're now bringing in fish and wildlife, you're bringing in the regional board, you're, you're now changing your drainage. People have built expensive improvements in our right-of-way, some permitted, some not, but, you know, these are driveways, these are entry gates, these are fancy mailboxes. The PG&E poles are, are in the way, and moving, moving utilities can get very expensive. So I, I'm just trying to give the board a sense of, for instance, the section on Salvador, we costed out somewhere between a million and a million and a half, whereas Oak Knoll was four times as long as that section on Salvador. So it gives you a sense of the costs of these things. I'm digressing a little bit, but the, the county is in the process of studying what an up-valley or a full unincorporated county traffic mitigation fee might look like, and it's something that we'll come back to the board, and the board, you know, will consider it. But the reason I bring it up is it's possible to include certain bicycle circulation projects within the context of that traffic mitigation fee. Again, if the board is interested in doing that, if the board is ultimately interested in adopting the fee, there might be a way of generating some revenue to do some of those sorts of projects. At the moment, the board really doesn't have a funding source for doing those bigger projects. We have, and I say we, CEO Alsop and I met with Cara last week, and we made a commitment, we have a paving project coming up on Silverado Trail in 2025. Not a long section, it's about a mile and a mile and a half, basically from Zinfandel Road south to about 128. I'm not quite sure we're going to get the whole distance, but we've committed to work with the, with the Bike Coalition to add, add a minimum reflectors and maybe some other things to kind of see, basically to use that as a pilot, if you will, as an area of Silverado Trail, where we can try things and, and see what might, what might make sense on a broader scale. So, so wherever we can incorporate those things within our existing projects, we're definitely going to try and do that. The board should definitely at least think about other funding sources for some of the bigger projects. Caltrans does have a paving project, I believe in 2026, for the section of Monticello-Vichy that Cara mentioned, so this would be, is a good time to talk to Caltrans. They have the same challenge with width that we do, but there is some shoulder there, they may be able to pull something off without widening. Something like Rutherford, I'll just mention to the board, for instance, Rutherford, which is a, Rutherford Cross, which is a Caltrans road. If the county says to Caltrans, hey, we want a bike lane, Caltrans will say, great, write us a check. You know, it's probably not the kind of thing that they would do of their own accord, they would turn back to the county for funding. So again, the answers to, the answers to all your questions is always money. So, okay, I think that maybe is a very long answer to Supervisor Gregory's question.
I appreciate those. Those were great additions. Thank you. Where I was headed with my question was, I think we should create an inventory of the bicycle-related projects we want to do in our community, merging the great work and CBC just did with our planning, and, and create a agreed-upon set of capital projects that we want to accomplish in a certain period of time. And they should be in there and as important as some of our roads projects, and let's figure out how to fund them, just like we do everything else. So that's where we probably need to get to. I think sometimes our bike-related projects are just kind of off to the side and, and not as, as important. Bicycling in Napa is popular for a lot of locals, but it's a world-class destination for cycling. And it's just this piece of diversity we can add and continue to improve on our plate to have that, that, that other thing to do in, in addition to our world-class food and wine. So I think it's important in all these different ways, and, and I'd like to see us move that way. Thank you.
Thanks. And Supervisor Cottrell, I think, has a question as well, Steve.
Yeah, thank you. And just to, I agree with Supervisor Gregory, your idea of how to move things forward and develop this plan, and also Supervisor Petrosa, your point about viewing this as, you know, part of an experience of people coming to the valley, I think is so important. So, great, and I appreciate how well you both are saying the partnership is working between the Bike Coalition and Public Works, and that, that early checking in with projects makes a ton of sense. So a question I had for you, is you mentioned both the traffic mitigation fee and also the countywide bike plan. So can you give us a sense of timing about when those might be coming to the board? So again, that we can kind of start to capture all of the, all of these ideas and build the priorities out.
I wish I could, and like I said, NVTA is working on the bike plan. I don't actually know what their schedule is. I mean, I think it's relatively, you know, with months. It's not weeks, and it's not years, so I, I just have to say months, I can find out that information and get back to you on that. And in terms of the mitigation fees, I'm turning to Becky. Do you know what our schedule is?
We are avoiding it, and we will be coming back to the board probably six, eight months.
Okay. So just for, for the public, since Becky didn't have a microphone, she was saying about six to eight months. We did have our kickoff meeting with Will Dan, who was, is the consultant doing the study, so we'll say six to eight months to come back with that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Letter.
Sure.
Thanks so much. And Cara, thank you also for keeping the all-age, all-abilities at the fore, really, really important, that in addition to, you know, cyclists coming here, we are thinking about active transportation, getting people off the road, so ways that we can do that for everybody, regardless of their age or abilities. Really important, so I'm glad you, you mentioned that. Do, do we have any public comment on this item? Anything on the phone? Okay, great. Thank you, and thank you so much. Great presentation, we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, we're going to move on to... Okay, we're going to move on to 11C. This is through our Health and Human Services Agency. Receive a presentation from the Napa County Behavioral Health Board for their annual report covering fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. And we have Christine Hachka here to, who is the chair, to make that report. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Gallagher. And thank you to the board for giving us this opportunity to talk about some of our key accomplishments and our concerns for the Behavioral Health Board. This past fiscal year was a pivotal year for us as the Mental Health Board revised-
Excuse me, could you push the, yeah, the microphone more towards you?
Yeah.
Or stand closer?
Okay.
Great. All right.
That's perfect. Thank you. All right. Anyway, so it's a pivotal year for the Napa County Mental Health Board as we revised our bylaws to transition to Behavioral Health Board. And this change was initiated last fall by Cassandra Eslamie, our Director of Behavioral Health, who charged the Mental Health Board and the Advisory Board for Alcohol and Drugs to determine how we should merge into one board. And consolidating those two boards would mirror the merger of the two divisions in the county. And acknowledges that many of our residents have co-occurring disorders, both mental health and substance use disorder. And it helps us provide a more holistic approach to how we look at our population. I just want to mention that I think our county was very forward-thinking in initiating this merger last fall because we actually made that change prior to the passing of California Proposition 1, which now requires all counties to change to having a Behavioral Health Board and not two separate boards. So in March, you changed, you approved our bylaws, and we became a Mental Health Board and a Behavioral Health Board encompassing both mental health and substance use disorder. And I think that we have made that merger very successfully. We have five former ABAD members who are now Behavioral Health Board members. And we've appointed two of those people to our executive committee, and we've been incorporating substance use disorder issues into our agenda and into our goals. In addition to that, we really had a rebuilding year for our board in terms of membership. We had 10 new members join the board in the fiscal year, and we have made some strides in better representing the population of our county. With so many new members, it was really important. We had five people with any tenure who knew what in the world we were supposed to do. So training was really important. And all but one member of our board attended a Behavioral Health Board training that was provided by the California Association of Local Behavioral Health Boards and Commissions. And this training focused on our statutory duties, how to fulfill those duties, and of course, the Brown Act. So we have two primary areas of concern and recommendations, those being housing and children and youth. So first, I want to talk about housing. Housing for residents with serious mental health issues has been a top unmet need in Napa County for many years. We need more non-congregate shelter, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing options for individuals and families experiencing serious mental health issues. Now, the county has made some significant strides in creating supportive housings for persons with mental illness in the past two years, but we still have a shortfall, and that's expected to persist. We need congregate living facilities due to a complete lack of adult residential facilities for persons experiencing serious mental health in the county, and no short-term residential therapeutic programs for youth. The lack of long-term adult residential facilities results in out-of-county placements, and I'll be talking about that a little bit more later. And it becomes a revolving door between homelessness, jails, hospitals, and short-term facilities for many of our residents. Placing our people far away from home in different counties and away from the support of family and friends results in a high social cost for our residents. Looking at children and youth, our children and youth confront a range of problems, and that has grown dramatically in the past few years, partly due to the pandemic isolation, harmful social media interactions, and access to drugs and alcohol. We've seen an increase in our county in behavioral health interventions with youth, emergency psychiatric admissions, and youth suicide ideation. Prevention and treatment resources sufficient to address the need for youth is really a priority in our community behavioral health wellness planning and funding. So the rest of my report provides information to emphasize and substantiate these two main concerns. First, I want to talk about the California Behavioral Health Planning Council data notebook. Each year, mental and behavioral health boards in California are required to complete a survey for the California Behavioral Health Planning Council. And part of this survey has been tracking the state of homelessness programs and services because of the intersection of housing with behavioral health issues. We were able to look at Napa-specific data for five years and found that our country, county has increased the number of individuals and the number of, we call them bed days, for individuals with serious mental health issues who require housing in adult residential care facilities. We have also seen an increase in the number of children and youth who require placement in short-term residential therapeutic programs. So looking at that first point about adults, I had mentioned earlier, Napa continues to lack community-based adult residential facilities for persons experiencing serious mental health issues. The large, the alternatives are large ARFs outside of Napa, remote from family and support. And we really believe that community-based adult residential, adult residential facilities in or in counties adjacent to us at least would likely result in improved outcomes and in the, in the long term would have some cost savings. These facilities out of county are really, really expensive for us. Children and youth who are dependents of the court and require short-term adult, short-term residential treatment programs are also placed in other counties for housing. So again, we're talking about taking children away from their homes, sometimes far from their families, and that is not, it's not really the best treatment for them. Looking at our site visits, one of our board's statutory duties is to conduct site visits to programs and facilities under contract for behavioral health services in, you know, to the county. So each year, we work with the Behavioral Health Director and our contracts manager to identify those facilities to visit. And the sites that we visited this year provide further evidence regarding the need for housing for Napa County residents experiencing behavioral health issues. In fiscal year 2324, our site visits included residential facilities as far as, far away as Red Bluff, Stockton, and Yuba City. These are just some of the locations. We have locations all over Northern California where we, where we house our residents. And I just want you to think of, imagine your loved one living this far away and needing behavioral health services. How can families maintain regular contact and support their, their family members? We're not the only county facing these kinds of challenges. Across, across California, each month, more and more adult residential facilities are closing due to insufficient financial support. We need to determine how to provide long-term residential care closer to Napa, and we need to advocate on legislation that provides support for adult residential facilities in the state as a whole. And I personally know that there are a number of bills that are being considered for the next fiscal year that are related to this issue. So I would hope I could perhaps advise you when those are coming up for discussion. But overall, I do want to thank you for your support. Our, our Board of Supervisors is very supportive of behavioral health in this county. I know that you provide funding for behavioral health where, out of our general fund, where many of our counties do not. So we're very, we're very privileged to have a caring county that, you know, that really is trying to look after the needs of our citizens. And I also want to thank you for providing a Board of Supervisors representative who is really active in the, in the work of our board. And we've really appreciated his tenure on, on the board for these past several years. So I want you, to encourage you to reach out to me if you have any questions or if there are issues you'd like more information about. And just thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you so much. And I do have some questions and comments, but I first wanted to see if we had comments from Supervisor Gregory, since he sits on the Mental Health Board.
Yeah, thank you very much. Great presentation. I just want to mention the site visits real quick. That's one of the best things we do as a board. We go out and see the programs that we're contracting with. All the tens and hundreds of little contracts on here for services we contract with, I've been able to go see a handful of them in person. And so for me, as a board member, it's been super helpful. So I want to thank you for facilitating all that, all those visits. And then too, the merger between mental health and behavioral health has been seamless. And it's because of your skilled leadership as Chair.
Thank you.
And this isn't your first time as Chair.
No.
And you've been on the board for a long time. So I wanted to thank you for what you've done to advance the board into what it is today.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Supervisor Cottrell? Oh, sorry. You're late. Okay. Christine, as the two main issues came out in the report around housing and mental health for youth, I'm just curious if there's been an effort or will be an effort to work, maybe have some meetings, you know, do some brainstorming with our Housing and Homeless Department in terms of the housing issues, and also maybe Mentis and On the Move around mental health for like our transitional age youth. And if there's anybody else in the audience who wants to chime in, just curious about maybe what, if you've discussed any of those kind of collaborations?
No, we haven't. I mean, we have some issues on hand right now. We, we have a study that's being done on mental health impacts of cannabis use. And coming out of that, we are expecting to try to collaborate with the schools and some of our nonprofits to perhaps have a, have a meeting where, have a Behavioral Health Board meeting where we, we discuss those kinds of issues. So that's something we're looking at. But I think you're right. In terms of housing, we know there's going to be a lot happening around housing for, for mental health clients due to Prop 1. And, you know, we don't really know what that looks like. I'm sure that we'll get involved in some of that, along with the Behavioral Health Division.
Great. It just seems like the more that our other departments can be working with your committee would be really, really helpful. And they're getting kind of, you know, a lot of ground truth from you, but you're in, in addition, getting all of the information you need from, from those departments as well. And then please do forward us any bills that we should be tracking. We have our, Andrew Mize, our legislative analyst, who can be looking at those, and we can be supporting.
Right.
And whatnot. We want to make sure that we are aware of that because, you know, we definitely have a lot of work to do in this, in this realm and want to be doing everything we can to be supportive and, and supporting especially the primary needs that you're finding for the behavioral health population.
Yeah, I have a close relationship with the California Association of Local Behavioral Health Boards and Commissions. So I'm very much aware of what's on their legislative agenda, and I'd be happy to share that with you.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Anything on the phone? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Christine.
Thank you.
Really appreciate. And Director Yasamodo, would you like to make some comments? Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Jennifer Yasamodo, Director of Health and Human Services. Glad to be here. I just wanted to address a couple of the two areas that came up, because I think it's important to kind of maybe round out kind of what we're doing and what's on the horizon and kind of how this fits into the context. So when we look at, maybe I'll take the youth piece first. So as your board knows, through our community health assessment, recently, we did issue $4 million in MHSA contracts, specifically using MHSA P E I funds. And that was, I think, about nine contracts that came to your board. And that really kind of spanned the continuum of sort of the age span, including youth prevention services. I think that's just really important to note. And that was actually the fourth round of MHSA RFPs that we have done in the last two and a half years. So we've really kind of stepped up our, looking at our MHSA funds and how to push out the most funding possible in that area. Also, in the youth realm, I think it's important to remember this, and I know construction projects take a while, but we did receive a DHCSB chip grant to expand our CSU. And what's really important about that is it's a youth expansion. So right now, you know that our CSU is eight chairs. This will expand it out to 12, so that increases our capacity by 50%. And it's designed to be a specific youth milieu. So that really is a design to help create a sort of safety net, but also a really rehabilitative space for youth coming and seeking crisis that can then transition to them to other levels of care. So construction projects take a while. So that, we are now at the point that I think it's probably not going to be done until 2026. But I think it's important because so many of these things, it's like, I don't know, the bread's in the oven. It takes a while before it's actually ready to pop out. But that is in progress and lots of work. Also, in the youth space, your board had approved our partnership with the schools, and that's an MHSSA. I think it stands for Mental Health Student Services Act funds. And it's a basically sort of a pass-through grant, but we're in partnership with the schools. And that's 2.5 million that's going to the schools. And that is actually supporting many of the youth wellness centers in the schools. It's a close partnership. We are in regular meetings with the schools, NVUSD and the other school districts, around how to collaborate and support mental health care for students and youth, treating them really where they are at the schools. Kind of in the ecosystem, though, it's important to know that an entire behavioral health, mental health, Medi-Cal for schools is now in the pipeline. So it's not just looking to the county and our EPSDT services for youth. The schools can now tap into Medi-Cal services directly, and they're doing so. They're, it's still, still the groundwork's being laid, but that's a game changer, and it's really all part of CalAim. I think that's important to know. We also brought to your board within the last six months, a new EPSDT contract with Mentis to expand our EPSDT services. So we now have three providers. They provide services in the school and in the community. So that's important to know. And then getting to the issue of sort of youth and STRTPs. So those are facilities that thankfully we do not use very much in this county. And we don't use it much in the county compared to many, because I think we do a really good job working with families and youth to keep them in our community and wrap them with services. And those are youth coming out of probation system and child welfare. I think at any one time, we maybe have one or two youth placed in STRP, STRTPs out of county. Your board approved, I think, a 2.7 million contract with Seneca to provide high-fidelity wraparound services. And for a county of our size, we have a whopping 18 slots. That is really important and critical because it wraps youth who are at risk of going to higher levels of placement like STRTPs and gives them all the support they and their families need to keep them here in our community and in their homes. So I think that's- So I think that's really important to know. And then on the issue of housing. So housing in mental health treatment, housing is what we really refer to, is it's a, it's an ecosystem that we're constantly building out. Maybe one of the things that might not be widely known is that we actually do through our Behavioral Health Division operate, I want to say just shy of 100 beds. And that is done in conjunction with our permanent supportive housing with providers like Buckaloo, with Progress, who does permanent supportive housing as well as Crisis Residential, as well as Mentis. And we have our own Fresh Start Housing Program for our full-service partnership clients at the grounds of Napa State Hospital. So that's all that we're operating in the background that sometimes I think doesn't get a lot of attention. Your board is also aware that in preparation for Care Court, we partnered with the city and purchased with Mentis, holding the property, six additional units. And Mentis will be the provider of services for that. And that's in line in preparation for Care Court. So that's another six beds that are coming online. We also have a Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Grant that we applied for and received. And those funds are being used to supplement rent subsidies to keep people in their housing, as well as it was used in part to purchase that Mentis Care Court housing. And we are using it strategically to stabilize clients who would otherwise not be able to maintain their housing. And finally, you know that there is any number of rounds of B-Chip, Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program grant funds through Prop 1. That's the same grant that we applied for the CSU and got awarded. On the horizon, by December 13th, there is additional opportunities. And you have to have shovel-ready projects. One of them is a social rehab facility. There are very specific categories for which you can apply. We actually have now engaged a real estate agent to try to comb the ends of real estate available in our county to see if we can secure a purchase using and applying for a B-Chip grant funds in this next round. So I say that because it's important to understand what we have in place, but also what we're building out. We're thinking strategically as grant funding opportunities come out and real estate is limited in this county in terms of facilities that we could stand up and operate ourselves to not have to send clients out of county. We agree with what the Chair of the Behavioral Health Board just talked about in terms of it's always better to keep people in county. But I just wanted your board to understand that we are paying attention to these issues. We're making strategic investments and I think we're well positioned. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for the reminders and the updates. I think, you know, we approve things at different meetings, but looking at this comprehensively is not something we necessarily always do. And so this just makes me think that when we have a report from a commission or committee, that we need to, we need to also have that information from the departments about what is actually happening. Because we may see a recommendation come out of a committee, but we don't necessarily then have the rest of the story in terms of what's actually happening, what's, what's happening in the near future. So maybe there's a way we can build that into, to that. But thank you so much because that really rounds out the story for us. Does anybody have any questions or anything for Director Yasumoto? Thank you very much for being here and for being able to, to just step up spontaneously with all of that information.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks for everything. Okay, we are going to take a 10-minute comfort break and then we will come back for our public hearing, item 13A. So we will be back at 10:52.
Emily, can you hear me? I can't hear you. Maybe it's because our sound is going. But when we turn on our stuff in the back, you should be okay. If you did it like we did yesterday, we'll be fine.
Okay.
There's our AV team. You're all good. So just hang out a minute. We'll be back at 10:52.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Emily, can you hear me?
I can't hear you. Maybe it's because our sound is going. But when we turn on our stuff in the back, you should be okay. If you did it like we did yesterday, we'll be fine.
Okay.
There's our AV team. You're all good. So just hang out a minute. We'll be back at 10:52.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. permit P twenty dash zero zero two two two, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. And I see that we have our planning staff and county council here, so, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Gallegara and members of the board. I'm going to turn over this presentation to Emily Head, our Planner Three in the department, and she will present this project. And we are available to answer any questions after she does her presentation.
Thank you, and Ms. Hedge, welcome via Zoom.
Thank you very much. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we hear you very well, and please go ahead and get started.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Chair and Supervisor.
Before Ms. Hedge gets going, we need to take any disclosures and any new Levine Act disclosures. Thank you.
We don't get a lot of public hearings, so let's just go ahead and start with Supervisor Ramos.
No disclosures for me. No disclosures for me.
Supervisor Crickory?
None for me. None.
And none for me as well. Right, thank you, Mr. Appals. And Ms. Hedge, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. The project before you is the Prydmore Property General Plan Amendment, rezone and use permit. Next slide, please. Today, I will go through the project proposal. We will discuss some of the items and then present you with staff's recommendation. Next. The project includes three components. They would be processed in the order of the General Plan Amendment, the zone change, and the use permit. I find it can be helpful if we look at them sort of in reverse. The applicant is requesting a use permit for a small lodging facility that requires a certain zoning designation, so that needs to be changed, and that zoning designation is compatible with a certain general plan designation. So that's why the three components are involved. Next, please. The project is located on the eastern side of the county in Capel Valley. The parcel is approximately five acres, and it is the site of the former Capel Valley School. Next. Project history, in two thousand seventeen, the applicant submitted the General Plan Amendment. When a General Plan Amendment is initiated by a private individual or a group, it must first come before the Board to determine that the amendment is in the public interest and that it is internally consistent with the general plan. Back in two thousand seventeen, there was a Board of Supervisors hearing where the Board of Supervisors voted to initiate the hearing, excuse me, initiate the amendment. In two thousand twenty is when the applicant submitted the associated zone change application and use permit. And then in May fifteenth, twenty twenty four, the item went before the Planning Commission, and they recommended that you approve the project, and that is included as Attachment A. Next. The General Plan Amendment would change the land use designation from agriculture, watershed, and open space to urban residential. As I noted, urban residential is the general plan designation that will allow the property to be rezoned to the requested commercial limited, which is the zoning that would then allow for the use permit. Amendments to a general plan must be internally consistent and compatible with the policies and goals throughout the general plan. A general plan consistency analysis was prepared, and that is included in Attachment F. Next. As part of the General Plan Amendment Consistency Analysis, staff reviewed Measure J and P and determined that the amendment is not subject to those measures. Measure J, which was passed in November of nineteen ninety, aimed to protect Napa County's agricultural land from increased urban development. It established a framework to guide land use focusing on preserving the region's agricultural character. The measure was a response to concerns from residents about the rapid urban development and its impacts on our rural areas. In two thousand eight, Measure J was extended and enhanced by the passage of Measure P, which amplified widespread protections throughout Napa Aglands through twenty fifty-eight. And the figure on the right-hand side is entitled AR and AWOS lands, not subject to Measure J. And it's a bit hard to see on the graphic, but under Lake Barriessa, there's sort of an arch-shaped red area, and the Prydmore property is located in that area. Next.
Ms. Hedge, we lost your audio a bit.
Okay, can you hear me?
That's better, thank you.
Okay. I'll lean a little closer, but hopefully not too close. Do you need me to repeat anything from the slide?
Maybe just your last sentence.
Okay. The last was a note looking at the map. Under the Lake Barriessa area, there is an sort of arch-shaped red blob, and the Prydmore property is within that area. Next. Measure J established a framework to guide the land use character focusing on preserving the region's agricultural character, and four key components were identified, including zoning restrictions, agricultural preservation, community input, and environmental protection. And these were included to ensure that there was protection for existing farm and vineyards and not allowing them to be converted to non-agricultural uses. It emphasized community involvement and required public hearings related to these topics, and it included provisions for environmental protection and review of proposed projects. Next. Changes to the county's land use map, which require, excuse me, which redesignate lands that are currently AR or AWOS, requires a two-thirds vote of the people. An important note here is that the designation that you're looking at is based on our land use map that was first adopted by the Board in nineteen seventy-five, as amended through September twenty eighth, two thousand and seven. So Measure J and Measure P were intended to protect existing agricultural designated lands. So if a property did not have a land use designation of agriculture at that time, the measures were put in place. The requirements of those measures do not apply to the parcel. In the case of the Prydmore property, in September of two thousand seven, the property had a designation of rural residential. Therefore, it did not meet the parameters of Measure J. It wasn't until December two thousand eight that the property was rezoned to an agricultural designation, and that was part of the proposed land use map amendments, also known as the PLUMA. And since the property doesn't meet the requirements of Measure P, this can be redesignated by the Board of Supervisors without first going through a vote of the people. Next. The zone change component would change the zoning district from agricultural watershed to commercial limited. Hotels and lodges are allowed with a use permit within the CL zone, but are not allowed within the current zoning, which is AW. You can see the graphic on the left is the existing designation, and the right shows the change to the commercial limited. You can see there are other commercial properties within the area, including a RV boat and storage yard directly next to it, and also the Moscow White Corner area, which contains multiple commercial zoning properties, is located about three-fourths of a mile from here. Next. The next component is the use permit. This would approve a small lodging facility that would include nine lodging units ranging in size from approximately four hundred to six hundred square feet, one caretaker unit, or accessory buildings, some of which would be repurposing the existing school buildings, along with construction of one new building, and then a new barn in a fenced-off agricultural area, which could be used for community gatherings or private events. Next. Excuse me. The use permit would also allow for four full-time employees, a number of annual events, and site improvements would be included, including the improvements to existing wastewater and water utilities, along with some installation of new utilities to meet county and state requirements. They would also improve the existing driveway and parking lots to meet the Napa County roads and street standards, and also the requirements of the commercial limited zoning district. The use permit would be subject to the conditions of approval, which are included in Attachment E. And you received a change memo yesterday noting that the conditions of approval, Attachment E, that was included with this packet, did not include the agency memos. They were included in the September ninth version of the attachment, but although they were inadvertently missing from this one, they have been sent to you directly yesterday. Next. Here you can see an aerial of the site along with the existing development. The driveway comes off of Capel Valley Road into the existing parking lot, and then there are the buildings. The remainder of the property is undeveloped with some dirt and grass fields, along with, there used to be, I believe, a baseball field out there. Moss Creek runs along the northern edge of the property where those tree lines are. And then next to it, you can see the other commercial property, the storage yard. And south of the property, a little in the bottom right corner, you can see that's the Capel Valley Fire Station. And although it's not a commercially designated site, it is also another non-agricultural use adjacent to the property. Next. The proposed development would, as I said, include improvements to the parking lot and driveway. The school buildings would remain and be reused for accessory uses to the site. The new agricultural and barn area would be down in the bottom right corner of the site, and then the units run along the northern and eastern property lines. The structures would be set back a minimum of thirty-five feet from the top of the bank of the creek along the northern property line. Site improvements would also include removal of some unused pave areas on site, additional landscaping, and internal access roads and pedestrian pathways. And the two pictures on the right are some potential sample units provided by the applicant. Next. For the environmental analysis of the project, an initial study and negative declaration was prepared. Staff's analysis found that the proposed project would not have any potentially significant environmental impacts. You received a public comment letter yesterday from Water Audit California, and they had some comments that were related to this, so I'll touch on those briefly now, and then if the Board would like, we could talk about others after this. The SEQA document was posted to the State Clearing House, which made it available for review. The requested change that was put in by Director Bordona was related to the review period timeline. There were no discretionary permits that were required by other state divisions that would impact approval of this project, so the timeline was selected to be the shorter review time. It was available to all interested parties, which is noted by the comment memo we did receive from the State Department of Toxic Substances Control, which is included in the conditions of approval. The comment letter states that there wasn't mitigation included from other state agencies. Staff did not receive any other comments, so there weren't additional things to include. There were also comments about the Tier Three and public trust. There are two significant streams located near the property, so an analysis was done of the well, project well, to see if it would have impacts on either of the streams. The project's hydrogeologists conducted their analysis and determined that it was not likely there was a connection, and therefore the use of the water for the project would not impact those streams. The project is outside of the Napa River watershed, therefore it is not connected to a navigable waterway or the Napa River, and therefore the public trust doctrine does not apply to this project. Next, please. Staff, based on our review of the environmental analysis, the general plan and zoning consistency, we are able to make all the required findings for the SEQA and the use permit. Staff believes that the applicant's proposal can be supported. Next. Staff's recommendation to you is, again, based on the fact that we were able to make all of the required findings. The action requested today is, one, adopt the negative declaration. This is Attachment D. Adopt a resolution to amend the general plan. This is attached as Attachment B. Three would be adoption of the ordinance to rezone the property. That is Attachment C. And approve the use permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval, which is included as Attachment E, and then with the division and agency memos you received yesterday. Next. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. There's also our staff in the office, and the applicant is there as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hedge. I want to ask my colleagues if they have any clarifying questions of Ms. Hedge before we go to public comment. Okay, do we have public comment on this item? Anything on the phone? Yes, okay.
Mr. McKinnon, are you there?
I am indeed, ma'am.
We can hear you. You go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. William McKinnon calling on behalf of Water Audit California. We've submitted two comment letters, and I heard the staff presentation this morning, and I wish to, with greatest of respect, correct it. When it was initially posted on SEQA, it called for comments from two state agencies, from Caltrans and from CDFW. And when Mr. Bordona submitted his withdrawal, he dropped the two state agencies from the circulation. The net result is that I spoke to Craig Waitman this morning at CDFW, the captain responsible for Napa County, and he says it's never been distributed to them. Now, we brought this up in our initial comment letter, and after filing our initial comment letter, I went so far as to have a staff member call Mr. Prydmore and say, "Look, we don't object to your project. It looks like a nice project, but we really must insist that you have CDFW take a look at it." That's their job. Fish and Game Code six and sixteen hundred gives them the responsibility. They should look at it, not a staff member in the planning department. And they never received it. It was never distributed to them, in spite of the fact that we made it, I think, very clear and politely several months ago. He also pointed out that there is no great rush to get this done, considering the fact this all started back in April, and it could have easily have gone to them and had them review it and come back with it. It may be that nothing there. So this isn't a problem with the project. It's a problem with the process, with the greatest of respect. And when this morning I heard reference to there being a thirty-five-foot setback, I was struck by the fact that I believe in the proposal it said a forty-five-foot setback in the streams. I don't know whether either one is acceptable, but I do know that CDFW should have looked at it. Similarly, in looking at the Tier Three analysis in this presentation, the Tier Three analysis says there's no streams within fifteen hundred feet. So that's not true. And finally, the last thing I want to mention is this is a public water system. I believe in, as the planning staff said, they have a well. They need two wells. Thank you for your time. Nothing more.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to bring this back to the Board. I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Kalina, do you have any, or Ms. Hedge, do you have any comments regarding Mr. McKinnon's comments that were just made around the thirty-five or forty-five-foot setback, the Tier Three reference to streams?
Sure. So the thirty-five foot would be the minimum required setback for our code, so it could be larger than that. Obviously, we're happy to have larger setbacks, but the thirty-five foot is the minimum based on our calculations for stream setbacks, which are based on slope of the area. Regarding the Tier Three, I believe there was in a portion of the, in a portion of the water availability, it noted that there were no significant streams. However, there was a supplemental attachment to that, which did discuss the Tier Three analysis and noted the streams. The SEQA document also discussed that, noting the significant streams in the analysis that was completed, as well as it was discussed at the Planning Commission staff report and during the hearing.
Okay, great, thank you. And I just wanted to ask Mr. Bordona if you had any comments on the procedural issues that were brought up.
Yeah, so from a procedural perspective, the revision through the State Clearing House, which was done at the direction of, or the advice of, an individual at the State Clearing House, was to reduce the comment period from thirty days to twenty days, which is allowed was to reduce the comment period from thirty days to twenty days, which is allowed by SEQA. And the reason for that is it didn't involve any state agencies, particularly fish and wildlife. And contrary to what Mr. McKinnon had stated, sixteen hundred permits are only triggered when you're doing work within the bed and bank of a creek. This project isn't doing that. So while fishing and wildlife may have an opinion on the project, and we would accept it if they did, they don't have jurisdiction and their regulations aren't triggered. So it was, I guess, in our view, unnecessary to send something to an agency with no jurisdiction or permit authority. As it relates to the tier three analysis, one was conducted. It was conducted consistent with our WAA standards. With respect to tier three, there are no significant streams. In order for there to be a significant stream, it has to be connected to a navigable waterway. That creek is not. Only the Napa River is, with respect to the county. Nonetheless, the tier three did conclude, and I believe Mr. Pridmore is going to speak to it in greater detail, that there isn't a connection between the well and the stream. So taking public trust off the table, but environmental, potential environmental impacts with respect to interconnected surface waters, we've satisfied that as well. And I think that addresses, in case I miss anything, I'm happy to answer your questions.
That's, that's great. You mentioned Mr. Pridmore speaking. So, Mr. Pridmore, did you want to speak? Or, okay, then I'm going to reopen the public hearing so that you can, you can speak. Please, please come forward.
Thank you, board members and staff for your help. I think it's been seven years since I stood here, so my wife calls this my third child, this project. Anyways, I, I wanted to just speak a little bit about the project. Kind of, well, A, it's been a long road, and B, kind of why we're, we want to do it. And I spoke to the planning commission a little bit. You guys heard all kind of the technical details, but we, you guys are familiar with the east side and Lake Berryessa, and that, that area has, well, I guess financially speaking, been slowing down. We've been losing restaurants and tourism and growing up, we had, I want to say up to eleven restaurants in the area and the resorts were open, and it was kind of a thriving tourist area. And since then, all of our restaurants are closed up there now. All of our schools are closed up there now. The resorts have closed down, and I know you guys are making efforts to try to get that going. But we, we basically have Turtle Rock. That's, and they have good egg rolls, but but we're kind of hoping that if we can get some lodging that appeals to the type of people who are coming to the Napa Valley, that it might give a a little boost, you know, and bring some, some more revenue up there for the residents that live up there and restaurants that have, you know, been there in the past and have tried to open in recent years as well. So that, that's one of the main reasons. And then the other is a source of income for our family. Was it Proposition nineteen? It was kind of a big blow to families that have had generational property and especially if you're not a very, very wealthy family, which we are not, especially relative to Napa, what's, what we have in Napa. So we were looking at a way to generate some income up there that would really just take the smallest footprint that we could kind of come up with in order to offset the costs of keeping our ranch that we've had for, shoot, going on a hundred years now. So but, so that's, that's, that's that part. Now I kind of want to just go into a little bit about the tier three analysis and some of Water Audit's comments. I'm just going to dive right in here, actually. It's going to be a little technical, but David Peterson with Wagner and Boncignor, he's the one who put this together. He couldn't be here. I didn't get the comments till late yesterday afternoon and I was basically up all night trying to go through them, so. But David went through and did this analysis and he found that the well, this project well, is physically confined in a strata of bedrock, I believe is how he, what he called it, and that, that strata of bedrock is not connected to either of the streams on either side. And that was his initial approach, and he showed, hey, it's not connected. Then secondly, he did kind of a theoretical analysis of like, okay, let's pretend that it's not confined. What if it was connected? And he did an analysis based on that and found that really the sphere of influence of that well only goes out about a hundred and twenty feet beyond where the well is of, and the nearest stream is, I think, four hundred feet away. So. And then lastly, he actually did another tier. He, he used a USGS modeling program that, and he modeled differently how, how that stream would be impacted, again theoretically, if it was connected, and found that that model, and I'm unfamiliar with software, so I can't get too technical on that, but that it also wasn't connected to the stream and wouldn't have any impact. So I, I don't know, me personally, what else to do to satisfy that, that comment, but yeah, that, that's kind of, and then lastly, I understand Water Audit's concern. Water is a resource and maybe the most important resource for human survival, farming, that sort of stuff. But to give this a little context, historically, when the school was operating, it, it was using almost double the amount of water that is being proposed for this project. So that, that seems like a savings in my mind there. So, but that, that's it for me. Any questions?
We will see. I don't, we'll call you back up if we need to, but thank you so much. Appreciate that. And I'll, I'll again close the public hearing and bring it back to the board and just wanted to reiterate that this is a time to ask questions of staff. Then we would be looking for a motion and then we could move on to sort of more discussion and comments. So does anybody have any questions for staff? Look to just see if any lights pop up here. I don't see any. And so now I'm going to ask if anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll move approval of requested items in the staff report.
Okay, I have a motion from Supervisor Gregory and a second from Supervisor Pedrosa. And now we have some time to discuss or make comments. Do I have any discussion points or comments from anyone on the board? I just wanted to comment to Ms. Hedge and the team. Thank you for clarifying the issues around Measure J and Measure P. Mr. Everline, I hope you are listening to those. Just to make sure that we understand and the public understands why this is, a particular project is not subject to those. I think that's going to be very, very important. It's certainly very important for us to understand and very important for the public to understand as well. And I think we have a comment from Supervisor Cottrell.
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, I appreciate Ms. Hedge's presentation. And I also went back to read the 2017 analysis by John McDowell and where he went through the eight factors that are required in reviewing a general plan amendment. And I think the other point that Ms. Hedge pointed out is that the Measure J and Measure P measures were to prevent agricultural operations from becoming non-agricultural. And as we all understand, this was a school site. This wasn't functioning as an agricultural location or open space. So not only is it not in Measure J or Measure P, it also, it was not, you know, a functioning ag site that is now coming, coming out of ag. So I'm also supportive of this project. And also, I appreciate Mr. Pridmore's points about, you know, what can be done to help the economy of the eastern part of the county.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I will go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right, great. Thank you. And thank you so much to our planning staff and county council, applicant, everyone for all of your hard work. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move to item 10A. Give some time to switch up staff here. This is an administrative item. For the groundwater sustainability agency, we will receive a presentation on, excuse me, funding mechanisms to fund groundwater sustainability agency management and groundwater sustainability plan implementation and provide direction regarding funding options. Ms. Crosby, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Gallagher and members of the board of the Napa County Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Jamison Crosby, Natural Resources Conservation Manager. I'm very pleased to be here this morning with Ryan Aston of SCI Consulting Group to continue the work that was started about two years ago and present to you options for future funding of the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. As you know, our mission as staff of the GSA is to achieve and maintain sustainability of the Napa Valley sub-basin by avoiding undesirable results in the six established sustainable management criteria for the sub-basin. As observers of the agency will recall, the GSA was formed in 2019 in response to state law. That law was the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or SIGMA as it's called. Actually, I'm just doing a little. Oh, yeah, you can just leave it right there. Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, the agency was formed in response to SIGMA, a state law which was signed in 2014. And while some may view SIGMA as another unfunded mandate from the state, I would argue that the opportunity to manage groundwater resources locally presents really significant advantages and benefits to groundwater users and just to residents generally. And indeed, if the county proves unable to manage our groundwater resources, the state will not hesitate to step in and manage it for us. Since forming in 2019, the fund, the program has been funded entirely from the Napa County, or excuse me, from Napa County General Fund for a total of about eight point seven million dollars to date. We were very fortunate to get a two million dollar grant from Department of Water Resources to help us write our groundwater sustainability plan, which we did. And apparently, what we presented in our plan was very credible to the state because they approved it in 2023. But now we have to implement it and exploring options for a dedicated source of funding is the next step in the process. Before I turn it over to Mr. Aston and for the benefit of the people who may not be familiar with the agency, I'd like to touch on just a couple, well, more than a couple, a handful or two of some of the work that the agency staff and our technical team are doing. First off, we measure groundwater levels in about one hundred and sixteen wells twice a year. Takes a couple of weeks to go through the whole round of one hundred and sixteen. In addition to doing monthly measurements at a smaller subset of wells and downloading data loggers at our interconnected surface water well sites. And incidentally, to any who are, happen to be listening, thank you to the well owners who allow us permission to monitor your wells and measure them. In 2023, we installed sixteen new dual completion monitoring wells. Would like to thank City of St. Helena for one of those, who provided some funding toward that effort. We retained five members of our groundwater technical advisory group and we facilitate their monthly meetings. We're currently planning the 2024 Napa Watershed Symposium. So mark your calendars for December 5th at CIA Copia. We do an incredible amount of stakeholder outreach and engagement and responding to stakeholder comments and questions. We actually keep a spreadsheet of all the activities that we do, and there are over a hundred and fifty items for the last three years. Meetings, touchpoint, emails to listservs, public meetings, just a lot of, a lot of outreach work. With all the data that we collect, that, you know, we have to analyze that data, so we do comprehensive analysis and development of annual reports, which are required by the state, and updates to our Napa Valley Integrated Hydrologic Model. Starting just this summer, just a few months ago, we are monitoring at six interconnected surface water sites throughout the sub-basin. We work with RCD doing stream watch, providing irrigation evaluations for growers who may like to have that service. And last but not least, we are implementing three work plans. So I didn't want to get into, take away too much from this, but I did want to stop and, and touch on that. But I will hand it over to Mr. Aston now so that he can present and leave plenty of time for your questions.
Thank you, Jamison. Good morning, members of the board. Glad to be with you here today to provide a funding option summary presentation. This will touch on a, in a high level, or in a, on a high level, on some of the key considerations that went into the Funding Options Technical Memorandum that we prepared over the last year or so. And then we'll dig into a bit more detail on one of those options in particular. We'll first give a brief introduction to the project team here today, and then I'm going to share some key considerations to keep in mind when evaluating these different options. Then we'll touch on funding mechanism frameworks, rather legal frameworks is really what I mean by that one. And then we'll also go into funding mechanism methodology, so sort of the basis for charges and some of the options that go into that. Then we do have a recommended funding approach to share with you today, and of course, we'll have time for questions and discussion. Brief introduction to the project team here. As Jamison stated, I work for SCI Consulting Group. We specialize in public agency funding needs, so we bring Proposition 26 and 218 expertise to the table. We're working with Larry Walker Associates, who's a firm we partner with often. They specialize in environmental engineering, so we feel that we complement each other well for these types of projects. It's good to have some, some groundwater science-based people in the room when you're, when you're kind of evaluating these different options. Of course, we're happy to be working with county staff as well. So this is a list of key considerations. As I mentioned before, these are things that I hope you will keep in mind as we go through these different legal frameworks, these different methodology options. Revenue generation potential and use of revenue. Obviously, some of these funding mechanisms have certain constraints for how you can use the revenue. That relates as well to the payer pool. Some of these are a little more inclusive, a little more flexible in terms of who you can include and other have certain, others have certain constraints surrounding that issue as well. We look at things like allocation of costs, what kind of costs we're allocating and in what manner we allocate those costs. Of course, political viability and community acceptance. One of the things that you may note as I go through these is some of these have, you know, balloting requirements, other requirements in terms of implementation procedures, and others don't. But regardless, political viability and community acceptance are key elements of any, any type of funding mechanism. And then a big one as well here is legal defensibility. This is of course extremely important. We have been working with county council and will continue to do that as we move forward here. Another thing to keep in mind is cost of funding mechanism implementation and administration. So the, the cost of the mechanism itself and the annual administration that might go into that is something to consider. And lastly, flexibility and precision of methodology. And I'll, I'll note on that, that typically the way I describe that is that methodology, the granularity of a methodology can sort of exist on a spectrum. You have less granular or more granular. And the more granular you get, typically the more work you have to put into it, but it, it can also be a little more precise, perhaps a little more, more proportional. And so finding that correct balance, I think, for, for each situation is, is optimal. Moving right along here, I wanted to touch on the sort of legal frameworks behind these funding mechanisms. And we have two primary options here, and I describe these as primary options because they are prescribed by SIGMA in the water code. So water code sections 10730 and 10730.2 authorize GSAs to charge certain types of fees. The 10730 fees are typically adopted in accordance with Proposition 26. And these are really, these are really meant to fund administrative costs. Program administration is the terminology, terminology used in that code section. Water code section 10730.2 fees are adopted in accordance with both propositions 26 and 218. Prop 218 is mentioned specifically in that code section, but I But I will share that recent case law has really brought about a need to consider both Prop 26 and 218 in terms of those types of fees. These can fund a more broad spectrum of GSA groundwater management-related activities. The two alternative options I have here are special taxes and benefit assessments. These are not mentioned in SIGMA in the legislation at all, but they are available to California public agencies. Both of these have balloting requirements, two different processes there. But I'll dig into a little more detail in terms of why these really kind of are alternative options and perhaps not primary. Little more detail on the two SIGMA fees. The Water Code Section 10-730 fees, again, these are generally interpreted as regulatory fees, subject to Proposition 26. Both of the SIGMA fees, including this one, the payer pool is really in a lot of ways limited to all direct groundwater-using parcels. So there are some key proportionality requirements from both Propositions 26 and 218 that really focus these types of fees on those people using groundwater directly. These do have a fairly streamlined implementation process. They're adopted by board action. But SIGMA does require a public meeting in which you kind of present an overview of the proposed fees. One of the things to keep in mind about this type of fee is that rigorous community input, in a sense, is not required. You don't have a balloting requirement or a protest hearing. But of course, it's recommended. And that's something that we always try to do, even with this type of fee where it's not necessarily required by the law. I touched on this briefly a moment ago, but in terms of use of funds, you can see on the screen there, that's directly from the code section. You can see that these fees are really intended to fund generally program administration and some of, perhaps some of the SIGMA-required activities such as annual reports, things of that nature. But they cannot fund major capital expenses. So I think that's one of the key differences between this and the next code section fees. Moving on to that other code section, the 10-730.2 fees. So the legal framework here, I mentioned briefly a moment ago that the section references Prop 218 specifically. But there is a need, I think, due to recent case law to consider both props 26 and 218. So overall, these have a more stringent proportionality requirement attached to them. Similar to the 10-730 fees, these would likely be charged only to direct groundwater-using parcels. And the implementation process here is the majority protest, excuse me, majority protest process from Prop 218 property-related fees. So that's a notice mailed to all affected property owners at least 45 days prior to a protest hearing. And then if less than 50% of affected property owners submit written protests, the fee can be imposed. If that majority protest is achieved, it cannot be imposed. And you'll see on the bottom, the use of funds here are a bit more flexible. They can cover a wide range of activities related to groundwater management, including capital costs. Oftentimes, we recommend this type of fee if capital costs are a key component of a GSA's budget or financial need going forward. I wanted to share this slide as well. Essentially, I want to illustrate here that while these two sections of the Water Code authorize GSAs to charge these types of fees, it's important to still identify the constitutional pathway that sort of authorizes and guides the way that these things are implemented. That's how we determine the appropriate implementation procedures and proportionality requirements. So we're really kind of looking at both of these different sources for guidance in terms of the legal framework here. I won't spend too much time on special taxes and benefit assessments. As I said before, we really look at these as alternative options. But I did want to touch on them. The primary reason that we don't see a lot of special taxes in support of groundwater management is the balloting requirement. Special taxes are balloted, as you probably know, at the polls and require two-thirds support of registered voters, which is a tall hurdle. There's also, of course, a cost and a risk involved with that process. Some of the benefits here is the payer pool broadens, right? You can charge a tax perhaps to, you know, everybody within the sub-basin or some subset of that, whatever was appropriate. So there is some flexibility there in terms of how you can establish a tax. But those implementation procedures often preclude their use by GSAs. Benefit assessments are sort of the other Prop 218 funding mechanism. These are implemented through an all-male property owner balloting and they have a 50% threshold. So slightly different, but it still has that balloting requirement there. One of the reasons we don't see too many of these in groundwater is there are very strict proportionality requirements and sort of a legal requirement to quantify the special benefit received by each parcel. So these get a little more complex. And we have seen a few of them up and down the state. But I think for that reason in particular, they're not very commonly used. Next, I wanted to turn to funding mechanism methodology and talk about some of the options that are out there. Essentially, when I talk about methodology in this sense, what I mean is when looking at a rate equation, as you see on the screen, we're looking at what our bottom number there is, that methodology unit. So we're dividing a revenue requirement by a number of parcels or acre-feet extracted or acreage. And so that's what we're looking at there. And of course, with groundwater, there are inherent challenges here because we don't have readily available meter data in a widespread fashion in most basins up and down the state. And so this is one of the challenges with funding groundwater sustainability plan implementation is you can't necessarily charge folks the way a water district might or something where you have a meter and you understand what their usage is. And so we have sort of some primary and some alternative options that have sort of been born out of that challenge. And I'll take a look with you here at what some GSAs are doing up and down the state. So the primary options, the things that we see fairly commonly. One would be extraction charges. This is referenced in those two Water Code Sections. You can tell that the framers of SIGMA sort of intended this to be one of those primary options. But again, we have that challenge of not having meter data for many wells. What we see oftentimes is some sort of estimation of extraction. And I'm going to get more into that in a moment. But we are seeing that in certain basins up and down the state. Another approach that's commonly used is a charge per irrigated acre. And in a sense, that's sort of a proxy for extraction, right? You don't know how much water somebody's using, but you know how many irrigated acres they have. That has its shortfalls, its shortcomings as well, but it is used across the state. And the two alternative options I presented here are acreage charges and parcel charges. These are somewhat commonly used. We saw a lot of these early on, but we are seeing something of a trend of GSAs moving away from these charges. And some of the folks that we've done some work for that have wanted to move away from those, the reason behind wanting to go with a different direction is largely because these two types of charges are not tied to water use. And so there was, I think, a perceived inequity perhaps on some of the property owners who were in basins that had used that approach. We have used those two approaches in tandem with other approaches like extraction as well. And so that is something of an option there. And again, we can be as creative as we want to be under the law, but we also want something that is simple enough to clearly explain to folks. Digging into a little more detail here, I wanted to touch on extraction first. This, of course, produces a charge per acre-foot of groundwater. But extraction must be estimated for most users. So this does present challenges. Some key characteristics here are, though, that it accounts for all groundwater users, right? If we have an irrigated acreage charge, that's only accounting for agriculture. So sometimes you'll see that in tandem with something else, a different way to look at charging rural residential users or public water systems using groundwater. So this approach does account for all groundwater users. It allows you to produce a charge per acre-foot, a dollar amount per acre-foot, that can be then applied to all the different types of users. One of the key sort of benefits to this approach is that it produces variable charges proportional to groundwater use. I briefly mentioned before, you have somebody using more, they pay more. Somebody using less, they pay less, which of course, I think, comes into play when you're trying to explain that to the community and get them on board with something like this. Some challenges related to this approach, it requires multiple data sets. The availability of data, the reliability of data can be challenging. We have established estimated extraction approaches before successfully, but there is an inherent challenge there. So that is something to keep in mind. The annual administration as well, one of those things I mentioned in the beginning, is more comprehensive. But typically, again, there's that spectrum of granularity. The more granular you get, the more work it is, but perhaps the more proportional it can be as well. Typically, this is a more complex approach. So the other thing I wanted to note is you often have some degree of appeals or the need for a corrections, sort of a corrections process for people to submit potential corrections and a way to deal with that. So that comes into play as an annual thing as well. And lastly, there is typically a greater fluctuation in annual revenue with this type of charge. This is a common consideration by GSAs because you can sort of shoot yourself in the foot, in a sense. You convince people to conserve water and then suddenly you have less revenue. So it's sort of one of those unfortunate things in the dynamic here. There are some ways that I can get into, you know, if we have time or perhaps at another time, that you can try to sort of create a buffer there and give yourself a little more of, a little bit more wiggle room in terms of how that works. But you do have to stay within the confines of props 26 and 218. So you really are just trying to generate the amount of revenue you need. But that is something to keep in mind here. I wanted to provide a little bit more detail on how extraction can be estimated. And I'll say first that this is sort of a different approach, right, for different types of parcels, sort of out of necessity. So for agricultural parcels, typically, water use, groundwater use for these parcels, is estimated using applied or consumptive water use estimates, which are in turn based on crop type and other factors. Oftentimes, we use the Department of Water Resource crop maps that can serve as a baseline for identifying crop acreages and crop type. Those usually have to be ground-truthed a bit, but they are a good baseline data set. We can then come up with sort of annual water use, groundwater use amounts per crop type per acre. We can take into account various related data sets such as irrigation efficiency, that sort of thing, to the extent they're available. And then that can essentially be multiplied by the crop acreage for a certain property. So that is typically how this is handled for agricultural parcels. But of course, it has to be different, for example, for residential and commercial parcels where we're not dealing with crops. So in those cases, typically what is done is you take a look at various parcel types and you identify the county use codes associated with those parcels. And you come up with reasonable water use estimates for that type of property, say a rural residence or a small commercial property, a small retail store, that sort of thing. In developing those, it's important, I think, to tap into whatever resources you can. Oftentimes, we have had conversations with local public water systems to try to get a better understanding of what the typical residential use is in that area, that sort of thing. And then that water use estimate is attached to that use code and applied to all parcels with that use code. And lastly, public water systems using groundwater is perhaps the only entity in which consistently we tend to not have to estimate this groundwater use because they are required to report that data to the state and is generally available. I will say that I believe in the Napa Valley sub-basin, there's only one public water system that extracts groundwater on a regular basis. So that isn't necessarily a large subset of use here, but it does occur. Moving on to irrigated acreage-based charges. I did reference this earlier for a moment. This would, excuse me, produce a charge per irrigated acre. But it does only consider agricultural groundwater users, which is, I think, the biggest perhaps shortcoming of this approach. We have implemented irrigated acreage charges in tandem with other approaches. And so that is an option, but then you do start to have sort of a less streamlined structure. And it can be perhaps a little more difficult to explain to folks how it works and why it's set up that way. Moving on to parcel and acreage-based charges. So these are perhaps the most simple approach. But sort of due to that simplicity, they do have their own shortcomings as well. I well know that these can also be used in tandem with other approaches. They are simpler, they are easier to convey to the public, they have a more efficient administration and also in terms of implementing them, they have less fluctuation in annual revenue. So there are some positive things to these approaches. But you do have to be, I think, very mindful of the proportionality requirements of Prop 26 and 218 because these charges are not proportional to water use. Even if you base them on size, size does not necessarily tell you what water use is going on. So there are some positives here, but there are of course some shortcomings to keep in mind as well. So that leads us to our recommended approach. I tried to keep this fairly concise here today, but there are, of course, a lot of options. And we have, by we, I mean our team and county staff have developed a recommended approach here. So we're going to share that with you now. And of course, we're very interested in any feedback and we're excited to sort of get your thoughts on this issue. So based on several factors, at this point, we recommend pursuing a Water Code Section 10-730 fee based on extraction. Now remember that Section 10-730 fee is the one that can only fund program administration and sort of SIGMA-required activities. But that makes up largely the basis of the Napa GSA budget at this point. Oftentimes, we do recommend the 10-730.2 fees when capital costs come into play. But at this time, those are not on the table going forward in at least the coming years here. So that's one of the main reasons we recommend this legal framework here is that there is not a need for capital costs. So you have that streamlined implementation. These can be implemented by board action. But we can still implement a rigorous community outreach effort. And that's something that we do have, SCI has, in our scope as a part of this project. And we can sort of develop the specifics of that with staff as directed. One of the reasons we're recommending an extraction-based approach are for several of the reasons that I mentioned just a few minutes ago. And that is that we can develop meticulous extraction estimates for agricultural, residential, and commercial parcels that can really try to get at what groundwater is actually being used. And while that is the more granular approach, it requires more effort. In a lot of ways, it can be perceived as the most equitable way to do this. It incorporates all users. It incorporates, you know, everything from residential to commercial to agricultural. So it's one way to sort of allow you to apportion costs to all people using groundwater and in turn, all people benefiting from the sustainable management of the sub-basin. Another thing I wanted to note here is that we do have within our scope to create an interactive database that can assist with estimate corrections and other considerations. We are working with staff on some of the details of what that might look like and whether that might be used for other county purposes as well. A few other considerations I wanted to note as well here is that this code section requires that in order to charge de minimis users, defined by SIGMA as those extracting two acre-feet or less per year for non-commercial purposes, in order to charge them under this code section, you have to regulate them pursuant to the GSP. This is something we have dealt with in other places. We think we have some sound ideas on what exactly that means. The legislation is not particularly clear, but we think that that's something that can be addressed in the Napa Valley sub-basin. Another thing I want to note here is that, you know, funding GSP implementation is a relatively new thing. It's, you know, it's not something we have 50 years to look back on the way you do with a water district or a conservation district. And for that reason, these funding mechanisms and using them for this purpose are relatively untested. So I will share that we have worked with GSAs who have taken this approach, namely the three GSAs in Sonoma County. And they have worked well for those different areas and those basins. This is something we plan to work closely with legal counsel on to make sure that we dot our i's, cross our t's here. And we do think that it is a sound approach overall. We wanted to share with you as well some preliminary rate calculations based on this approach, this recommended approach. And I will note that these are very back of the envelope. We have not really taken a deep dive on these yet. But we wanted to give you a sense of what things might look like if we look at the potential revenue need and potential extraction amount. So the first one I'll pull up is for extraction. And this is using an annual revenue need of $2.5 million. And we're looking at 2023 extraction, I believe, from the annual report of just over 15,000 acre-feet per year. So just dividing that dollar amount by that amount of groundwater use, we come to a rate of just over $163 per acre-foot. Of course, this is just an example. We have not delved into this in the degree of analysis that we would if this is the direction we go down. But we wanted to share with you what this might look like. Also wanted to, for contrast, share what an irrigated acreage charge might look like. So using that same revenue need and an irrigated acreage estimate of just under 19,000 irrigated acres, it comes out just a little bit less there, $132.75 per irrigated acre. This approach, of course, would not take into account other types of groundwater users that are not agricultural. Again, these are very high-level, back-of-the-envelope. So we don't intend to put this before you as a suggested rate, just wanting to give you a sense of the sort of the scope and the scale here. I wanted to share a couple other considerations here as well. What we do see in some places, including in Sonoma County, is the county making some degree of contribution to the GSA, or continued contribution, rather. This is something that, you know, in some places, if the county is perhaps less involved, you don't see if the county is perhaps less involved, you don't see this, but in other places, you do see this happen. The general fund contribution, one of the biggest benefits that brings, is it lowers the revenue need applied to ratepayers, and it lowers the rate effectively. In some places, it's seen also as a way to sort of acknowledge the county's continued interest in a groundwater sustainability program. So, you know, you know better than me whether that is palatable here. I don't mean to suggest that strongly, but I wanted to just put that on the table as something to consider as well. Another thing to note here is that costs do not have to be equally allocated across all groundwater users. So that rate I showed you for extraction, depending on how you apportion costs, it doesn't have to necessarily be the same across the board. What we do see in some places is they'll take costs that are tied only to, say, agricultural users and put those on agricultural groundwater users only. You do have to be careful there that you are accurately apportioning those costs and accounting for the benefit received to all folks, but that is another option here, is we can look at sort of some different cost categories and how we might apportion those. I think that just about brings us to the end here. Oh, I wanted to share as well sort of the overall process, if we were to pursue this path, what that looks like. The first step would, of course, be developing the groundwater use estimates. So this would be for the various property types I discussed earlier. We would refine those estimations through discussions with technical consultants, county staff, with growers, public water systems in the area, that sort of thing. This is something we would want to thoroughly vet and make sure that we're coming up with something as accurate as we can along the way. We would next create a database that would incorporate both property characteristics and the water use characteristics that fed into the estimations. And then we would really engage in more thorough outreach from that point forward, I think. At that point, really, you have to further develop the revenue need, look at the budget, what that budget is going to look like, plan out for typically a five-year period, and what changes may come, try to tell the future to some degree. But I think that that's obviously an important part of the rate and fee study, because it's going to, more than anything else, determine what that rate would be. And lastly, the development of that rate and fee study, really establishing the nexus between the service or benefit being provided and the associated charge. In terms of sort of more short-term next steps, based on board direction today, what we would begin doing if we were to move in this direction was we would begin preliminary groundwater use estimations, begin vetting those estimations. We would begin building that database in support of this whole process, and we would continue stakeholder outreach efforts. We did, last year, spend some time with members of the agricultural community, trying to get a sort of a pace on their feelings related to this sort of thing, but I think there's a lot more of that work still to be done, and so that would be a key next step as well. Thank you all for your time. Happy to go back to any slides as needed or answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Before we take any questions, I want to check to see if there's any public comment in the room?
Hello. Michelle Benvenuto-Wangers of Knott County. Just want to thank the county for doing the outreach to the industry groups and ag users in general. The only thing I might add is today's meeting could have been, like, I mean, obviously, you guys know, I'm always watching this and always here, but for the other groups, I don't even know if they knew that this meeting was occurring today. So it would have been nice to just get an email blast saying, hey, this is coming up at the meeting. But otherwise, thank you all for the continued outreach.
Thank you, Ms. Smith-Fenito. And do we have anything on the line, Ms. Hoskins? Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Anything from our board? Supervisor Cottrell?
Yeah. Thank you both for the presentation. It's really helpful to get the run-through and also thank you to staff for helping us understand this. Really appreciate Ms. Benvenuto's point about the outreach, too. I reached out to Caleb Mosley, who's the new executive director for grape growers, and also Garrett Buckland, and neither of them knew that this was coming up. So I think that's, it's hard to get ahead of it. But a lot of the comments and questions I have are based on my conversation with them. So, and I appreciate what you pointed out, that you have done meetings in the past year with grower groups, too, because I think continuing to workshop these options with them is going to be important. So one of the, first of all, I'd love to understand, we talked a little bit about the Santa Rosa Plain. I think that's one of the Sonoma County groups, and so would love to know a little bit more about that. One of the points that Garrett made is that an extraction formula can actually be a subtle push out of agricultural use, because if someone is, knows that they're going to be charged for that one acre of vines, and, you know, that could be the push if they see the extra cost of that coming in. I think about, I think, as I think about the extraction concept, it's a built-in conservation piece, but this extra piece of, it could make someone say, actually, I'm just not going to plant there, is something we, as an agricultural community, want to be aware of. So I thought that was a worthwhile point. And then the points about the more fluctuation in revenue, I think that's something to be aware of, and the more complex is something I'm concerned about as the initial rollout. I think one of the other things I want my colleagues to think about is that whatever solution we might adopt for the next five years might not be the end state, you know, solution. So, excuse me. So maybe we come up with something this first round that's kind of an introduction, and then as we and our groundwater users are more used to some sort of fee structure, we can evolve to something more complex. And I do think, I like the term meticulous extraction estimates, because I think that also indicates there's going to be a lot of time and effort that needs to go into that. So I'm cautious to ramp up something very complex at the first step. And then my final comments here, I really am supportive of some sort of continued county contribution. I think as we adapt, that's important. And also, let's be mindful of this moment in time. This has been a really challenging year for growers, and I think to roll out something brand-new, suddenly, you know, so I want us to be mindful of that and proceed cautiously, and also be able to, whatever plan we do roll out, provide some certainty over a period of years, so that someone can say, okay, let me budget this. So.
Those are my comments for now.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Ramos?
Can we go back to the slides of the cost and the plan, please?
Of course.
I took my own shot, but I think it'd be helpful for all of us to see the cost of the breakdown of the $163 versus the $132 price on extraction. Okay. So the $2.5 million is the operation of the program to date. We have been putting in the $2.5 ourselves to a total of, I believe you said, Jameson, $8.7 million as a whole, of which two of it was through grant?
Subtracting out two, but the amount that the, over the total years that the GSA has been in existence, it's been, I'll just say, almost $9 million, $2.5 million for the current fiscal year.
Okay. So I think to the point of having buy-in and to really be able to see this as a partnership, I really would like to explore an option where there is a county contribution. But I think it also does, in fact, need to look a little bit further. I know that the extraction rate of, we're not using the .2 version of the extraction rate, that's not what's recommended from you at this time, that would include capital projects. And so I think I'd like to see, you know, is it in our best interest that a county contribution program be reserved, a portion of it be reserved to create revenues, a reserve essentially for a capital project later down the road? Just because we don't need one right now doesn't mean we won't need one in the future when we look at whether it's even things like expansions of recycled water facilities that are within the GSA jurisdictional area, something we've talked about many times in the MST, the Milliken Sarko-Tilke. There is the desire to have a pump lift station out there that could, in fact, take some of the groundwater extractors off of groundwater and utilizing recycled water into the agricultural areas. So I am sensitive to the fact of tough year, hard to throw a fee at a program at the same time. This is, in fact, a mechanism for us to have conservation, but I'd love to be able for us to look at the county's contribution, being able to be itemized as a reserve, so that we could start looking at actually having capital improvement projects, not just the management of a program, but to actually be the enhancement of a program. So thoughts on that?
Yeah, I would, I'll respond briefly. I mean, that is something that is often done. Obviously, general fund, you know, money is much more flexible. There are far less constraints about what that can be used for. And so that is something we see. In Sonoma, they have not used it for that purpose. They have not had great capital cost needs up there quite yet. But they, in one of those basins, they know that's coming, and so they are in conversations with the county now. I'm not sure where they'll end up. But that is a fairly common approach, to kind of take that portion of money and have it in a reserve there, and sort of add it as a way to improve the program, as you stated.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Petrosa?
Thank you, Chair. So some additional questions. Is there a sunset on this, or an ability to revisit?
There could be.
I would really encourage that. Not that it's going to go away, but I think it just provides an opportunity for evaluation of what's working. And then giving that opportunity to the public is good. So I'd encourage us to have some type of sunset renewal, and if it works, we'll keep doing it. You know, I don't think growers, you know, are having a bad time. I think growers just need to understand what we're doing and what the outcome is that we're trying to achieve with this. So I think education, outreach, and engagement, whether they know about it or not, I think it's a two-way street, and folks should know about it. Us doing this during harvest, kind of problematic, right? So I do acknowledge that, but I don't think you need to feed everyone to their own table. They could come to our table as well. So, you know, timing for me is what I would say. And I think we have to attribute, there's going to be fluctuations. If this was a big yield, people were likely using more water, and we often are hearing about overproduction this year, that means next year, there's going to be some corrections, maybe lower yields, less water. So there's going to be some natural fluctuations on water usage. But that leads me to just basic math. If all of a sudden you're using less water, then administration cost is the same, the cost of water is going to go up. Yet, people are doing the right thing by using less water, but the cost goes up, that's not really an incentive-based model, right?
Meter.
There, oh, sorry. Do you want to go ahead?
Well, if they're using less, they are paying less, because it's per acre foot.
But if the cost of the, so if the total denomination...
The unit price goes up, but if they're using less total, it should...
I would run some numbers on that exercise, just to make sure, because again, if the $2.5 million is fixed, and the aggregate water use is smaller, the cost per unit goes up. Now, they're obviously reducing water, to be fair. So again, just think about that. Maybe that could be an incentive model. If people are doing that, there is an incentive. On the set aside, whether it's for infrastructure, I do think that's a good idea. I do think some type of hardship opportunity, if there are growers out there that have legitimate hardships, and not everyone that owns a vineyard is wealthy. So I think looking at a hardship for folks that really do have a financial hardship, I think it would be appropriate to look at. Again, support the program. We're trying to change behavior at the end of the day, and you have to do that by making sure people really understand what they're going to get out of this. And there has to be a clear linkage. So, thank you.
Supervisor Cottrell, did you have another?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Yeah. I had asked about the Santa Rosa Plain GSA. Could you walk us through what that formula is?
Yeah. So they utilized a program very similar to what I described, and we worked with them to create that program. You know, as a basin, they have a great mix of agricultural and urban users. And so I think that's probably one of the things that drove them down that path, is that approach kind of incorporates all different types of users. They, you know, they were very careful in rolling this out and paid a lot of attention to, I think, some of the concerns that you've all shared today in terms of outreach and making sure folks understand what they were trying to do and what the purpose of it all was. And one thing they employed was sort of a corrections allowance that provided a bit of a buffer. So they added a percentage, I believe the first time around, it was 8% of extraction, to help deal with that potential fluctuation there. It doesn't get rid of the fact that you're still, if you're conserving, eventually down the line, that rate's going to go up. But one thing I'll note as well is a fee study would establish a maximum rate that cannot be exceeded unless a new fee study is conducted. So, you know, you're sort of living within the constraints of that fee study for as long as you're using it as the basis for charges. I apologize. Was there anything else specifically you wanted to know about Santa Rosa Plain?
No. So that's, so I guess, one of the things I'm interested in is how much, you know, we talk about the database and the time and the hours that are going to be required on that front. So do we have, because that's going to add to the budget, right?
That's actually part of the budget.
So that's part of this $2.5 million number?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah. It's part of SCI's contract to do that, if you all choose to give us that direction. That money is built into their contract to develop that database. And it says it in the recommendation, but I'll just point out, too, that, you know, if you decide to give direction to do that, that's all we're going to do. We're going to come back and report on that, and at that point, you can decide whether to move forward or to scrap the whole thing. You know, giving that direction today doesn't lock us into anything.
Okay.
I would add, though, and so you're correct that the implementation of that is included in our scope, but I think you also alluded to the annual administration, which is a consideration there. And it's something that all three Sonoma GSAs have had to commit resources to. We've continued to work with them and provide support on that, and I think they are happy with it still. They feel that it's worth it, but it is a consideration, no doubt.
So one other thing, can you speak a little bit about, again, you know, wanting to make sure that whatever system we roll out isn't, A, punishing ag users, or B, pushing people toward different uses? Is there a reason to distinguish between type of use?
In terms of type of groundwater use?
Yeah. Yeah, like, why not just tell anyone who's, you know, whether it's domestic or ag, you have to, because I know one of the concerns I hear is that if we're, if we as growers are expected to pay a fee, we should be asking anyone who's kind of putting a straw in the ground to do the same, at the same rate.
That's the proposal.
That's it. Yeah. Okay.
Well, and I think that also coalesces well with Prop 26 and 218, right? You're supposed to account for everybody receiving the service or benefit. And that's, I think, one of the ways that an extraction-based approach helps to sort of dot your i's there. Not that it's, you know, without challenges, of course. But I, you know, I think you touched on a very key issue here, and that is the sensitivity surrounding agricultural production and sigma, and the conflicts that arise as a result of that legislation. And I know that in Sonoma, they had the corrections process there, and they did have folks submit, and there were instances where they changed estimates, but there were others where they didn't. And, you know, it's something that's going to be a challenge, I think, regardless. And we just have to be as mindful as we can of it as we make these decisions on what the best path forward is.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. I agree that the option that you are recommending sounds like the most logical. We want to make sure all users are paying toward the use and not just ag users, of course. And I also like that, you know, while this is maybe more complicated, as you mentioned, to implement, you know, if someone is using conservation methods or plans to use conservation methods and really reduce their groundwater usage, they can meter... usage, they can meter their well, and they can submit the data, and their fee can be reduced because they will show the actual use. So I do think it's an incentive to conserve. And a lot of people are doing all of those best practices. And so they can, they can show that and take advantage of that. So I agree that we should go ahead and, in terms of your recommended next steps, I agree that we should pursue those. Does anybody have any other comments around that, around next steps? Okay. All right. Great. Then thank you so much for all of the discussion and presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, sorry. Didn't I ask for public comment? Oh, that's right. Is he still there? Okay. I think we had a public comment on the phone that we missed, but we'll just go ahead and take it. Okay, I'll reopen the public hearing to get the public comment on the phone. Mr. Graves, you still there? Mr. Graves? Okay. Okay. We tried. Right, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Closing the public hearing back. And we are going to adjourn. We're going to have a brief closed session. This is Public Employee Performance Evaluation, County Executive Officer. And so we will take that in County Council's conference room. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you and welcome back. County Council, can we have a report out from closed session?
Thank you very much. The board met in closed session under agenda item 14A, Public Employee Performance Evaluation regarding the county executive officer. No reportable action was taken. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. We will now adjourn to the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. Thank you. Oh, and we are adjourning in memory of Brad Honorado. And also, we did lower our flags to half staff in his honor. Thank you.